Okay, well, welcome to our October 8 meeting. And we're going to start off with a report from our Missouri Extensions representative, Melissa Pilat. Is that how I say it, Pilat?
Pilat.
Pilat. Okay, sorry. All right, sorry. But anyway, thank you very much for doing this. We really appreciate it, and I know at least one of our board members has done it before. And so it does take your time, and so we really appreciate your service on this. And so I think we're ready. We're anxious to hear what's been going on there. So take it away.
Great, thank you so much. One of the really exciting things for me, when Susan reached out to ask if I would take on this role, is that my mother worked for Michigan State's Extension Offices here in Nuego County, Michigan, where I am right now, caring for my mom. And so just sort of the background of what a lot of the preconceived notions of extension are, we're already out of my, that just wasn't where I was at. I've always known extension to be an amazing resource for all people in our state, whether or not people realize they are receiving the benefits of the extension process statewide and here locally as well. So if you've ever had any master gardener training or have seen the results of people who have done master gardening training, that training even when offered through the Missouri Botanical Garden is actually done by extension agents who are specialists in those areas. And the certificate of completion is issued by University of Missouri and Columbia. So just some of those things are the idea of 4H being all that extension does and where farm kids benefit from the latest research in agriculture. It's a big, huge STEM area that's just really exploded for any child that wants to participate in 4H, as well as being a great leadership opportunity. And really thinking about those business incubator type of skills, that's been sort of a baseline of what extension offices in every state can do for their communities. So that is sort of what I brought to this sort of from the get go. So it's been a long time since I have been on a Zoom where I needed to present a slideshow, but I am going to use slides because being here in Michigan without the benefit of my notes or all the little flyers I was going to hand out to you guys, I just thought I'd kind of run through the updates that have happened since I took over the spot in, I think, mid-May or mid-June. I think May was my first meeting that I was able to attend. So every meeting comes with a, hey, here's something you might want to share with the people of your community, and it might be something they're already using and the city would be interested in knowing about. It might be something that would come up as useful. It may not be useful for you specifically, but as our communities talk about problems or issues that are coming up, just to consider the ways extension is already meeting some of those needs in our community and can really rise to the occasion. So I will pause for a moment to make sure I haven't just spoken randomly and been on freeze and just see if that clicks with everyone, if you're ready for me to start the slideshow.
I think we're ready. You weren't on freeze. Thanks.
Great. Okay, so I'm going to share my screen. If we'll do that, we will try to do this, and we will slideshow. Does that show up for you guys? There we go.
Looks wonderful.
We can see it. Yep. Okay, so from just the front of the extension webpage, what I wanted to sort of point out is that when you go to MU Extension, this top orange bar all the way across does not link you directly to the St. Louis connections for extension. So even if you know that you've reached St. Louis County, if you click on any of those orange ones across the top, it's basically taking you to the statewide site. So from that purpose, you really have to, once you see the St. Louis, scroll down. Through the innovations and ideals of the University of Missouri, MU Extension improves lives, businesses, and communities by focusing on solving Missouri's grand challenges around agricultural growth and stewardship, economic opportunity, educational access, and health and wellbeing. So sort of as that, as the core, to think about building that, the land and how we use it, but also small business and how we nurture and grow those as well is a big part of what extension does here in our county. Oh, so close. I was so clever with my, anybody know? If I can, I did hyperlinks in all of these in case they go to you, but I think what I have to do is full screen this, and then it might let me. There we go. Okay. So just from the get go, talking about MU Extension in St. Louis County, this is where, when you scroll down on that first page, you get all of the services and things like that that MU Extension does here in our county. One of the really exciting things that has happened is that extension offices are staffed by university faculty. And I know some of this might be like, you already are there, you know exactly how this works. It's been around for generations.
Don't assume that, Melissa. I appreciate it.
So every county in the state of Missouri has an extension office. So that is by design, and that is the purpose of getting the great research that is done with taxpayer dollars and often land-grant universities to make sure that that information is then shared back out with the communities via these offices. So one of the things that Susan had kind of started to see was that the county extension has a budget, and it is issued by the county. But the purpose of that budget is actually to operate the office, like literally the space, all the staff, all the faculty, all the instructors are coming from and are paid by and hired by the university to fill those high-level roles within extension. And then the role that the county has traditionally done and been responsible for is to make sure that there's an office for them to meet and do programs and meet with the public in and to offer support staffing. So the reception staff that's in that office is part of what the St. Louis County government funds as a part of, there's a revised Missouri statute that accounts for that, to make sure that it is legit and it is how it's run for generations. So from that, just to know that the extension website has a ton of stuff on it, but our local area information can be found right here on this page if you scroll down from the top menu. The very first meeting, I think this had been on Susan's meeting list, but I came in the following meeting and was just really blown away. I had been through parents as teachers, I'd been through the Clayton School District as a parent and as a volunteer. And one of the most fantastic things that I never knew existed. Let's see if it'll gently take me to the next page. See, I'm also using a 10-year-old Mac, so. It worked last time. Well, I will go on to tell you about the, let's pop it out this way, old school. Parent Link from University of Missouri is, as you see right there, described the Warm Line. Parent Link is an anonymous advice line for any parent or caregiver in the state of Missouri to be able to call and get help answering questions about caring for young people. And the only requirement is they are required to give a zip code so that Missouri can track the usage of this service across the state. And of course, St. Louis County has a tremendous amount of use of this line. So while we know that it's really important for people to get nonjudgmental help and that eliminating barriers to getting help is going to benefit children, and that's going to benefit families, and that's going to benefit our whole community. So I was very impressed with how that, just that that's been out there, and I never knew. So that has been one of my, like, you should know about this, even if not for you, for anyone that works with children, that are early childhood educators, are school social workers, anyone like that that could benefit from this. I could tell the school district and the school social workers, and they have a lot on their plates already. So just in terms of the word of mouth, I find that the raising awareness about what's out there can be one of the most powerful ways to make sure that people have the right resource at the right time. And that comes with more of us having this knowledge and awareness when someone has the need for it. So I thought that was a really great, like, wow, this is wonderful that MU does this and it's accessible to anyone in the state. The next program that we talked about was, it was a very interesting presentation. I forget the gentleman that came to present at this meeting, but Recovery Friendly Workplace. Some of the members of the council are working closely with economic development. Some of them are working with unions and some of the labor committees here in the county. And Recovery Friendly Initiative is designed for workplaces that want to employ formerly addicted people and to ensure that we don't lose economic gains by retraining people, by people returning to addiction, by all of these things that, again, we know that it's better as a society if people stay employed. It's better as a society if people stay clean. If there are stigmas in the workplace that are keeping people from expressing their needs to an employer or a union rep, that can be a barrier for them getting the help that they need. So Recovery Friendly Initiative is not really designed for the addict. It's designed for the employer. So as we have so many major headquarters and businesses here in Clayton that this would be something that their human resources people or their development type of departments, their staff development departments, would, if they saw the economic impact of addiction on our productivity, on some of these things, that it might be worth it for them to look into getting the help that they need. Not very many people, I think, are social workers in, trained in addiction and recovery and what the special skills are that might need to be held by someone in order to make that job a success for someone. So I thought that was really like, this is big level. This is systemic change that I can see coming out of the university, looking at ways that the, that our workplaces can improve for people and for our businesses as well. So that was really, really fascinating. The most recent presentation was timed very interesting as I sent my child to the School of Engineering at University of Wisconsin-Madison this fall with a very hefty tuition bill. Missouri S&amp;T is, we all know, UMRALA or the School of Mines, however you're familiar with Missouri S&amp;T, it is part of the Missouri University's sort of network. And the part that was really fascinating about this was I had looked at, I looked at the ratings of the programs, and S&amp;T is like biggest bang for your buck. And it's sometimes so hard to get kids from Clayton to, it's in RALA, or it's S&amp;T, and we want to go big. The impact of this meeting with the, one of the assistant provosts for the Coomer Institute and some of the development, student success development, just really honed in on how valuable a degree from Missouri S&amp;T is. The fact that Missouri S&amp;T does not just have engineering, they have an education college. So they have arts and sciences degrees that students can get. They have also received a huge donation from the Coomer family with the addition of other funds that came in sort of over the course of COVID. Around 2021, I think, is when they opened the Coomer Institute or really pushed it. They have a $300 million, I really think I'm not getting that incorrect, a $300 million endowment right now. The number of programs they're able to do, STEM outreach programs for schools, training for teachers completely free, and the scholarship money that's available for students coming from a district like Clayton. I know, I know one or two people that are there for a ride right now. So, and it didn't have to be this highly competitive program. I'm sitting here thinking about the, well, anyway, that's a personal discussion in my household in terms of that tuition check that we're writing. So I just want to put it out there again, in the world of where your circles intersect with people that are requesting college options for people or just really talking up to change your perspective on something, open your mind to the way smaller organizations can be more nimble and give more attention to a student in a way that my child's incoming class of 9,000 students is 4,000 more than the enrollment at Missouri S&amp;T right now. So it just really, I was blown away. I really hope that people give it a look. Or as you are just interacting with people in the community, just if you hear that little bit of, that, I don't know what we would call that, but I'll just call it snootiness. I will call that. If someone has some sort of sense of, oh, S&amp;T, I would beg them to give it another shot. It was a very, very interesting meeting. So, and then the last thing I wanted to bring up is that the county extension recently moved offices. Number of the people on the community, anyone like Clayton with a population of over 10,000 is allowed to appoint a member to the extension council. As, thank you Mayor Harris for appointing me on Susan's recommendation, that, so a number of the board members are in our large North County communities, and they moved the extension offices from Kirkwood into Olivette and, Olivette, Overland, sorry. See, but there is going to be an open house next week, Thursday, October 17th, sort of in the after-school up to before our next extension meeting. And just a chance for people to see the offices. You can bring your soil samples. If you need soil testing, you get information from a master gardener there on site. You can just kind of see like, what are the, what's the space like? What's the staff like? And how does this have a chance to impact my community? I think there is a other very, very well-known initiative that I did not bring up a link to, but there is a, like a community resource training. I'll add that to the email some other time, but, or they'll present on it again, and I will present it to you because I can't give you everything that I want to tell you about all the amazing things they do. I leave you with this final slide. Each slide that I included has a hyperlink to the site mentioned. But if you are one that likes to cut and paste or type them out yourself, I leave this slide with June as well, so that you can get a copy of that. And I open it up to any questions you might have right now, or I know you have a big meeting to get on to.
Thank you. That was, that was a great presentation. I have to confess, I will confess, I knew absolutely nothing about Missouri Extension programs. I mean, so I have one question, but I'm going to wait and let everybody else go first. That's what I always do. So senior, older person, Bridget, do you have questions, comments?
No, Melissa, thank you so much. I also knew, I'm not from here, so I guess I'll, I can at least say that. And I'm only a 14-year, I'm only a 14-year resident so far of Missouri. So I don't know, maybe they're doing that up in, I'm from Wisconsin, so.
Oh, yeah.
Madison's a great, Madison's a great place, so I think hopefully your child will enjoy it. So, but yes, thank you so much. I guess I'm curious, maybe looking at the website, like, understanding, you know, all the programs that they're kind of built, like, bringing to St. Louis County. Like, I guess I just need to explore the website a little bit more to understand where those, like, how people, you know, how people can get those programs into schools and, you know, I guess I look forward to kind of, I guess, learning more about it, so.
Oh, thank you. I do, I think you'll play around on the website, and then you'll find something that you like for someone you know, and then you'll find something that's interesting to you, and you'll forget it. And there's a little bit of a rabbit hole that you can go down. And I will say, I didn't find parts, there were parts of the website that I didn't find intuitive. I had to reach out to Rebecca Penniman, the community extension liaison, and sort of get her to send me some of the links that I knew were there. And I'm a librarian. I can find things pretty easily. So just, I would say, play around in it, and if you want to shoot me an email or ask me any questions, I'm happy to talk more about it.
Thank you. And I do hope, maybe I'll, I can't, I can't imagine becoming a master gardener, but I would love to garden better, so.
Oh, I've got that in my future plan. Yes, I want to do it.
Well, we can start with getting our soil tested. Melissa, that was great. And I had that same experience, went into my first meeting, not knowing anything about this, and I was blown away by everything that was offered. And, you know, it was with the university professors and all the partnerships. So as I listened to your presentation, you know, one of the issues, as you said, is getting that information out there so people know. I never knew there was a parent hotline to call. And so I wonder if we could help with that with some, maybe an article in City Views or something else at some point. So think about that, and we can, we can talk about that. And of course, then I thought as well that connecting with the school district, whether it be in their comment before a board meeting, or we can contact the board president and just see if they want an actual presentation because a lot of these, you know, so many things in our community are intertwined and things that could help the district as well in bringing in courses for their. The other part, a little more germane to tonight, actually, is we're looking at our livable communities plan and all the, all the goals that we hope, all the things we hope to accomplish and what the overlap, and how can we partner with Missouri Extensions and get the support we need that way, just kind of looking through it. And so I don't know if you've had a chance to look through the current plan. We're just approving it tonight, but there's certainly ways for us to start leveraging this as well. And I think Clayton can do a better job of that. First increase in the awareness and then actually saying, hey, yay, they can really bring something to us that we need. So I'm so happy you're doing this, and yeah, it was a great presentation, and we'll see what's next. Thanks.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you for serving and sharing the information. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Becky.
Another thank you here. I did not really know much about the program, and I certainly learned more. I will say I was struck by seeing Mr. Comer's name, since I knew Mr. Comer perhaps in a less favorable light. It was, it was a remarkable gift that he made, and I think it's fantastic what he's contributed to the state and to the school through his generosity. So, but thank you for the presentation.
Thanks.
Melissa, I was also unaware, and so thank you for your presentation. A question for you. I'm also unaware of the whole appointment process and the fact that we had the opportunity to appoint you. And so I'm wondering either what are the expectations on you as they relate to the city? Or is there something that the city needs to do or can do to be more supportive of you and this program?
I think that you're doing it right now, just having the opportunity to speak about the things that are presented in the meeting. An email is really easy to ignore. We all get tons of email, and there's links that we say we'll go back and look at later, but just that face-to-face opportunity to be able to share the material that's shared. My understanding, just how the appointment process was, Susan had a, Susan was in and had a conflict of interest and had reached out based on, I had applied through the, through the city's portal of, to be on a committee. Like, just put my name in the hat and that. So I think that my information was already in the city's hands and my application and background were readily available when a spot needed to be filled. So I, from what I could piece together, that was the process in this case. It is the type of thing that no one quite enjoys, being on a, an advising committee. So the purpose of the council is really to look at that annual budget. And although we don't have a lot of leeway with the cost of staff and the cost of buildings, we are a board that judges, or that weighs in on the financial and budgeting process for the county council budget. That's one of the things that is done. And from the perspective of being leaders in Clayton, which although our services here are to the city of Clayton as our county seat, I think anytime you have an opportunity to sort of perk up and say, I know about that. They do a lot of things that we probably benefit from but don't ever see. If I have planted that seed for you, as different departments are going through and making decisions about what things in our community get supported or what things get the, I don't even know what that is or what it does. So I would just put it out there from that perspective and to really think about the where we sit as a leader for our county and our state. That's how, that's how I see this role. I see it as I have an opportunity to represent Clayton with some smarts and experience and also to make sure that this isn't phoning it in for Clayton on the end of bringing what we bring to the board and what we bring to county extension is a really wide reach of leaders in our entire region. So that might be a little ambitious, but that would be my wish, that more people knew about, just a glimmer of some of these benefits that we get from our rich research history of our state universities that have always had our communities in mind. So as we, as we look at the future and what sort of opportunities come up economically, that this might also be another way to look at small business encouragement and incubator type of services.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
So Melissa, first, thanks for joining from what I would call lovely Nuego County. So my wife's a Michigan girl, and my daughter spends most of her summers at Camp Nuego, which isn't too far.
Absolutely. Yeah, I used to live, my mom used to live over on Poneo Creek, right by Pickle Lake, and the wetlands just had a major, major forest fire, so.
Oh, yeah, we, she goes up there every summer and loves it. It's an all-girls camp up in Michigan. She loves it. So, and it's been a summer up and back to Nuego County.
Yeah.
So I've actually used this a couple of times when I was redoing my yard for soil testing, actually. And I find that the people are great, you get way more detail from them than you'd get from any sort of like commercial process. So I would highly encourage folks who are interested in that sort of thing. It's a way better place to use, and it's affordable compared to like going to some kind of mass market, like commercial kind of entity. And then lastly, you know, Melissa, thank you for just serving on it. As you said, it may not be the most glamorous committee, but I think it's important for us as a city to be involved in those sorts of committees across the state and across the area because the more our name stays involved, the better we have a chance to kind of have a say in how things are done and also know kind of what's going on. And I think that's part of our role in St. Louis County and frankly, our role in the whole state. So thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Well, Melissa, so great presentation. I think my main question was going to be kind of, what do you, what do you do on the council? And you answered it already. Rick asked, you know, you guys are managing the funds and making sure they're allocated properly. I, it did catch my attention when you talked about small businesses, because in Clayton, we have recently lost our Chamber of Commerce, sadly. Yeah, and so I'm wondering, we can talk about this maybe offline, I just wonder if there's, if there are programs, we're trying to figure out, what can we do to help our businesses now? What, what kind of role should we play? What can we provide? And maybe there's a way to connect with, with Mizzou Extensions on that, for some help, and I don't know, what are the kind of resources? But maybe we can follow up on that. I'll, I'll make a note and try to remember, yeah, to reach out to you, because I think that might be productive. So, thank you again so much, and thanks for moving your date. We appreciate that so much.
I appreciate, I appreciate the opportunity to move the date, and I wish you all the best, and get, get lots of rest, and shore up your, you know, yeah.
Our stamina, okay.
Yes, exactly. Yeah.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay.
Flooding over here.
Gary, I just want to tell you, my very first meeting as an alderman, Ben Youshtel was the mayor. I did the exact same thing. My very first meeting, I was, I was so embarrassed. Yeah, there you go. Oh, man, okay. All right, so we can now begin our seven o'clock session, and I think we will first call roll.
Alderwoman McAndrew, here. Alderwoman Buse, here. Alderwoman Patel, here. Alderman Fader.
Damn, but here.
Here.
Alderman York.
Here.
Mary, Mayor Harris.
Here.
City Manager Gibson.
Here.
City Attorney O'Keefe.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. First, we would consider any public requests and petitions, so if anyone is here that is not here about something on our agenda tonight or online, now's your chance to come and ask us about it. And you know, hands. So, we'll move on. I think we would, we're gonna quickly review our consent agenda. It's, I understand, we might want to talk about the date.
Yeah, I would request that we pull out the Board of Aldermen meeting schedule for discussion.
All right. And I know we've got, the issue is, we have a, a meeting scheduled for Rosh Hashanah, and do we want to switch that around? June, you very brilliantly put some alternate dates already on there for us.
Yeah, so if you look at the calendar, you get, if we moved it to the sixteenth, we'd only have one week. That would just be one week after our previous meeting, whereas if we move it to the thirtieth, it is still two weeks until our next meeting in October, just because of the way the dates fall. So, that seems like a pretty logical move to me. I would propose that we move that date from the twenty-third of September, 2025, to the thirtieth. Is that a motion that needs a second or anything, or do we just do it?
Like, the October meeting, right?
We're talking about the September meeting.
Oh, September, I'm sorry.
Which, which the second one falls on Rosh Hashanah, and I thought you might have any, any opinion there, but we're moving it probably.
Not be a good meeting.
Yeah, okay, very good. Okay, just checking with you. All right. Yeah, I like the idea of the thirtieth personally. Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I, I won't be.
You won't be here. So, yeah. I mean, you can come join us anytime. You'll always be welcome.
All right. I'll actually be out of the country, so, got a trip planned. So, anyway.
Already have, no, you, that's.
You already know you have a trip planned? I do, because it's a big one.
Oh, all right.
Yeah, celebrate our thirty-fifth.
Oh, excellent.
So, that is beside the point of our meeting, however. So, um.
You need a motion that's seconded for that to happen, so I make the motion to move September twenty-third, 2025, to September thirtieth, 2025.
Okay. Hey, all this, we don't need a roll call, do we? All this in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Posted. Okay, very good. All right, so we're gonna switch our agenda around a little bit. Oh. Yes, we can have a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
I will move to approve the consent agenda as amended. Second?
All this in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
It's a roll call. Sorry.
Alderwoman McAndrew.
Aye.
Alderwoman Buse.
Aye.
Alderwoman Patel.
Aye.
Alderman Fader.
Aye.
Alderman Hummel.
Aye.
Alderman York.
Aye.
Mayor Harris.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay.
And that gives Rooster a liquor license. If that's what someone was sitting here for, they are free to leave. Just in time. No questions. You're welcome to stay.
You're good to go. Yeah, great.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, I wondered if that was the person.
I was like, I know who that is.
Okay, um, all right, so we are going to go a little bit out of order of our agenda, because we have some guests here to present some things. So, we're gonna skip over to the Commemorative Landscape Task Force recommendations, if you will. And so we have a city manager report for, first of all, the First Baptist Church, if you wanted to give that.
That's, that's correct, and, and I, I'll give a really brief presentation here. The member, the mayor's commemorative landscape task force has been working on commemorations. As you know, we've approved multiple markers already. The fiscal year 2025 budget allocates $2,000 for commemorative markers, and historically, we've shared those costs with the Clayton Community Foundation. So, there is a recommendation from the mayor's commemorative task, landscape task force this evening for the First Baptist Church of Clayton, and I know we have Donna Rogers here to speak on that this evening, so. I will turn it over to.
Yep. Donna, you want to come on up? And I tuned out a little bit while you were talking, sorry, but we, we, we did, we did kind of, we had a previous community remembered, and so this celebration of the black community that was here is, this is just another piece of that, if you will. This is part of that black community. So, we went through that actual recommendation then, and we haven't redone it, because this really just falls under that umbrella. And so what we're here tonight to do is, first of all, I'm free to ask Donna any questions about this, because she's the expert on that community and has a wealth of information, but we really want to get the language for the plaque approved, if possible, tonight, so we can move forward with that. So. Oh, turn on, turn on your mic. I don't think it's on. Yeah.
That does it.
Green?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
So, we've been through the presentation, I think, of the Clayton Missionary Baptist Church, and the deed that sealed the purchase of the church, the land that the church was built on, and I went through community members who attended the church, the interior of the church. I think the one thing that changes, perhaps, in my presentation, is that probably two days after I spoke to you, I was going through the post-dispatch and realized that the oh, oh my goodness, now I've got a total blank, but Bethesda Barclay House had actually started and was renting out apartments at the time that the Clayton Baptist Church was still there.
Did you bring?
Or it was removed.
Did you bring, put the photo in this thing?
Yes, the photo's here. So, I thought, okay, I need to go back and find out exactly what was going on here. I knew it was always to the north of the Barclay House. It was there on that corner to the north, but it's really over to even further north. So, I'm going to show you, if we can just kind of flip through those, and I say, so there we have the church there, and if you look at the side, you'll see when we get to the slide where the church is still existing at the time that the Barclay House is there, is being built. So, that establishes it as the fourth church in Clayton, and we'll just go all the way through pretty fast. Okay, right here, you'll see the Barclay House is built to the north, directly to the north, and there's still a little space there between that and the apartment building to the north. That, the church is still existing in 1961. The Barclay House is there in 1961. So, it is to the north, directly to the north.
Right where the Clayton on the park, or Park Tower is. Okay.
Now, if you go to the next slide, we see the construction that's going on. The Baptist Church is gone. And so that means it is passed October eighth, 1961, which was the last service there, and it's after the fire in 1962. The next slide, we see again the Barclay House, and construction is now beginning. So, as you tried, as we tried to establish where the plaque should go, it is a little bit further to the north than I think we, we thought before.
Right, so we, so again, we're here to just review and approve the language.
Right.
But just so you know, that we've had Matt, we've, Matt has very kindly rushed over there and, with me, and looked at all the possible places to put the plaque on that corner where Clayton on the Park is now, I mean, where the Park Tower is now. And there really isn't a spot in the public right-of-way. We can proceed to work with the condo owners to put it on their private property. And if that falls through, I mean, they might say no, they have to go through a process. They have to bring it to their board and do all this. So, then we would look either on, at the corner across the street at Clayton on the Park, or even across, across Brentwood, really in the Shaw Park, right there along that sidewalk. So, we have options of where to put the plaque. So, the hope is, my hope is that we will, again, review this language, approve it or, or not, but approve it or amend it, but then we will go ahead and, and order the plaque, because it takes like six to nine months to get it. So, we know we're gonna put it in. We're just not sure the precise locale, so.
So, we have the language for, I think we go two slides. Okay, right here, we have the language.
So, maybe you just want to read it to us, and then, and then we'll take any comments.
Yeah, any questions, but on September fifteenth, eighteen ninety-four, Clayton residents Robert Taylor, William Taylor, Jefferson Tyler, William Bailey, and Robert Morris, acting as trustees, signed the deed of purchase for this lot to establish a church. The members built a small church, which became the fourth church in Clayton. In nineteen oh seventy, nineteen oh seven, the community built a beautiful brick church on this site. First Baptist Church of Clayton was the center of spiritual and social activities for the black community of Clayton until October eighth, nineteen sixty-one. That Sunday, the charismatic Reverend Rhodes preached his last sermon at First Baptist Church. The parishioners united in their faith, marched out of the church, and the Reverend Doctor Rhodes locked the doors. The city had rezoned the predominantly black community from residential to commercial. The church was purchased and raised one of the last brick-and-mortar testaments that once for several generations, a tightly knit, vibrant community existed here.
All right, is this what you just read, the most recent? Because it's different than what's in our report a little bit.
Okay.
Well.
Praise at the beginning, acting as trustees of the missionary.
Oh, yeah. Okay, that.
Minor change.
So, this, this, yeah, in our copy, it says acting as trustees of the Missionary Baptist Church. This doesn't have that. And yeah, I think that's the only, okay, this one on the screen. Okay, okay, so I just want to, I didn't notice any other differences.
Oh, it does say, yeah.
Yeah, it says it here, but it, but it doesn't say it here. It says acting as trustees, comma, here. This says acting as trustees of the Missionary Baptist Church of Clayton, comma. So, I don't care which one it is, honestly, but I just want to make sure we're approving the right, the right one.
Right.
So, it's one on the screen. That's it. Yes?
I pulled that directly from our, from my files, so.
Okay, I would thank you. You're the expert. She's our liaison. So, there we have it. So, I, I know, I don't know if anybody had questions about the language, or.
Well, I, I just, I mean, I think the language is great. I'm a little, like, I feel like the last sentence, I have a little trouble, kind of. I don't know, is there, I feel like there could be a word added somewhere. I mean, is anybody, like, the church was purchased and raised one of the last brick-and-mortar testaments that once, like, housed a tightly knit, vibrant, like, I mean, I don't know. I feel like I'm, and maybe I'm the only one reading.
No, I, I tend to agree. It's not, it's not making sense to me.
I'm reading it, and I'm like, wait, I, so, I mean, we could just kind of mod, like, alter it a little bit.
I, I think the word "once" is what's.
I was gonna say, I think if you believe the word "once".
If you pull the word "once", then it reads.
Right.
Yeah.
More clearly.
So, I'm sorry, but what are we, what are we wanting to change to? Do you have a suggestion?
I mean.
What was the, what, can you tell me what the issue was again? I'm sorry.
I'm just, the last sentence, it, it seemed, it starts out great, and I, I totally understand what is they're trying to say, or what we're trying to say here. I just feel like we're either, we just have to take out a word or add a word or something.
It, it.
You just need the word "was" after "once", that "once was for several generations a tightly knit vibrant black community", or no, that doesn't work.
I know, that's why, I think removing the "once".
Take out the word "once". Yeah, because.
It doesn't work, it still doesn't rewrite.
Better, but it's still not there.
Sorry, but, hey, so.
The church was purchased and raised one of the last brick-and-mortar testaments that for several generations, a tightly knit vibrant black community existed here.
I don't, I don't see what the issue is.
I removed the word "once" when I read it, so that's why it sounds okay, we think.
The only other thing I would say is that represented for several generations a tight-knit vibrant black community that existed there. Is, I mean, I, I, I don't want to wordsmith it, but I agree, like, it's, it's, there's something structured.
My preference would be to, like, modify it as little as possible, while acknowledging, I agree with you all, that it is slightly awkward as it is. So, that's why I would recommend that we simply delete the "once". I think it makes it readable without wordsmithing what I'm sure was greatly considered by our experts on the task force. Yeah.
That phrase was reworked a few times, I can tell you.
I want to just offer, I'm sympathetic, but to Gary's point, if we just said that "once was", and then read on, but then eliminate the "existed here".
Yeah, that does it.
Then I think it sounds just right.
Yes, a period after "community" and the sentence.
Could you read it as you propose it be amended?
Let me do that on.
Yes.
The church was purchased and raised one of the last brick-and-mortar testaments that once was for several generations a tightly knit vibrant blank community, black community, excuse me. No? Still doesn't sound right?
No, I think the point is that. Yeah, well, and I think the point was that the community existed here, and it was erased.
To the community that existed there. It's a testament that, that community existed there, you know, so that's been, it's been difficult. Kevin, do you have a, you have a thought?
I think the location is the point of the plaque.
Like here. Existed here, right. So.
I'm just, it's, I'm trying to get it so it doesn't. Yeah, I agree with you. Is germane to the purpose of the plaque. I understand, yeah. And I think just eliminating the word "once" scans the sentence.
It works. You know, the, the, what, one of the things that makes it a little bit awkward is the purchase and raise part. If you said it, the church, the church was one of the last brick and mortar testaments that for several generations, a tightly knit vibrant community, black community existed here. Because you put that purchase and raise in there, it's just a, you know, it's.
Part of the point is that we rezoned it so that it could be purchased and demolished. So I think that's significant language to maintain.
No, I'm not suggesting, I'm just suggesting that that's kind of what, kind of throws it off a little. So I like, I like your suggestion, Becky, personally, because it has gone through a lot of review. So, so can you read your suggestion again?
Yes. "The church was purchased and raised, one of the last brick and mortar testaments that for several generations, a tightly knit vibrant black community existed here."
I, I think that works really well. Donna, are you okay with that? Is anybody not okay with that?
It's still very awkward.
Is it awkward enough for you to vote no?
No, it's not enough for me to vote no.
I move that we strike the "once" and whatever's grammatically correct as it relates to the comma and approve is in what was presented to us.
Just removing the word "once", second. Yeah, second, okay. Is this, would this be a roll call, dear? This wouldn't be, would this be a voice vote? Okay, okay, so I like that. I, I personally think it's a good solution. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, good. Donna, we have a plaque, so we're gonna move forward and we'll get Alex to order it and we'll keep working, I'll, I'll reach out again to the condo folks and.
Mayor, can I, can I ask Donna a question, for surely? It's nothing to do with the wording, but I'm just sort of curious. It seemed to me when I've, when I've heard about the rezoning in the past, the time period was more sort of the mid 50s, but maybe that's wrong. I'm trying to understand what happened was where a lot of the people basically evacuated or forced out of an area, but they continued to come to the church even though they didn't live down the street on Hanley?
They did. So we're talking 1957, I think it was the zoning.
Yeah.
And then a couple of years, we've got the purchase of property. But yes, there, there may be three families that are left, but they're coming from Wellston, they're coming from the city, they're coming from Webster, they're coming from Kirkwood.
Yeah, I think that's another actually remarkable thing about it is that it was in a sense a neighborhood church. The neighborhood got kicked out and a lot of people, wherever they were forced to live, they still came back to the church. So that's a pretty interesting aspect of the, of what happened here.
I interviewed one woman who talked about getting up early on Sunday morning at about seven o'clock and getting ready and taking the streetcar or the bus, I'm not a Saint Louisan, I'm sorry, to, from Wellston to Clayton. And this was, this happened for about a year in her life after her family left Clayton.
Thank you.
So June has pointed out something interesting, which is, I think it's appropriate we're talking about this tonight, because it's 63 years ago today that the church was, was closed. That's pretty interesting. Okay, thank you, June, for pointing that out to us. Okay, Donna, thank you very much for all your work. All right. We have one other thing from the task force. And we have Chris Mees, I think, on, online to talk about it, but first, the city manager will give the report.
Yes, this is another commemorative commemoration, this time for the Osage Nation. Just like with the last item, we spoke about, this was a recommendation that came from the mayor's commemorative landscape task force. And just like the other item, we typically split the cost of these markers with the Clayton Community Foundation. With that, I'll turn it over to Chris to present it.
Hi, Chris, thank you for being here.
Well, thank you. Just going through, we'll, June, if you don't mind putting up the PowerPoint. And we can skip those first few pages. You're all familiar with the guiding principles and the evaluation criteria. So we'll start with the Osage Nation recognition summary. And we'll kind of go through the first couple pages on that. So the mayor's commemorative landscape task force. Okay, keep going through. Yeah. Next, oh, wait, I can do that, right? No. There, okay, and the, we'll skip this one. Thank you. So the mayor's commemorative landscape task force recommends a multi-dimensional phased commitment to commemorating the living heritage of Osage Nation in our city. Interestingly, dating back to AD 500 and up to 1825, ancestral Osage territory covered the state of Missouri as well as several surrounding states. There's trails all throughout our sage, and some of which that go through Clayton and in fact, right through Oak Knoll Park. As French traders and settlers moved into the area, they established ties with the Osage who taught them how to trap beaver for their fur trade. They worked together, they became business partners, some even married. But when the fur trade dwindled and after the Louisiana Purchase, the United States government decided it was imperative to move all tribes farther west to make way for European settlers to take over the land and build a new country. So under pressure, the Osage ceded their land in Missouri beginning in 1808. And the cumulative effect of this, they were paid one cent for every six acres that were ceded at the time. So in the next slide, you know, there's this vision that it was also primitive and yay, you know, the Western civilization changed it. But it's true that by applying this egocentric knowledge of assumed superiority, Western civilization rationalized this usurpation of Indian sovereignty and seizing of their territory. But, and no reasonable mind could deny that the technology or hardware of Western civilization was superior to that of the Indian civilization. However, in matters of cultural intangibles, there are valid reasons to question the superiority of Western civilizations over Indian civilizations. There's no doubt that in 1500, a higher percentage of Indians enjoyed better housing, better nutrition, better clothing, and greater freedom than the conditions that prevailed in Western civs. So across Saint Louis and throughout the United States, this forced removal of indigenous populations has been accompanied by erasure and misrepresentation of their histories, cultures, and continued presence. Today, there's efforts underway across Greater Saint Louis, the state of Missouri, and nationwide to address this erasure by commemorating and embracing local indigenous communities, histories, and cultures. You know, there's that effort that's gone on in Tower Grove Park as well. So ours would be a multi-dimensional phased approach that would recognize that our city stands on land that was once part of Osage Nation. And at this stage, what we're really seeking from the Board of Aldermen is a commitment in principle to the proposed commemorative effort outlining the rationale and recommending approach. And the next slide is the approval process, which I, I know you're all familiar with, so we won't belabor that. And we'll go right to the evaluation criteria, which is the next slide. Is the principal legacy of the namesake and/or subject depicted fundamentally at odds with current community values. So the reality of this is that the United States maneuvered to displace communities and destroy their native culture under the guise of, quote, "civilizing the native people" who thrived, who lived and thrived on these lands. Incidentally, here's a little side effect. The way they did that, because as people learned that there was this rich culture that went back to, you know, 500 AD, that they created a myth that said, the current indigenous people murdered those people and therefore they are uncivilized. So there was a lot of lies that went into making this up, by the way. So now that we have come to that, if we acknowledge that we are on these traditional homelands of the Osage Nation and we pay respect to elders, both past and present, we're thanking them for stewardship of this land and paying greater respect to the Osage heritage. So the next criteria on the next slide is the context at the time. So the Cahokean culture, which centered around what is the present day city of Cahoke, Illinois, was the dominant culture from AD 1000 to AD 1350. And the Osage were part of that development. And when that society collapsed, and nobody really knows why, the Osage then recentered their homelands in additional areas of central and southern Missouri. And again, it's kind of skipping through to that. After the Louisiana Purchase, that's when the United States decided that all of the Indians who lived east of the Mississippi had to relocate west of the Mississippi. And at that point, there were tribes who had lived on that land for many centuries. So they relocated people, like, there were already other tribes there. So a lot of this was really presumptive. On the next slide, you'll see, here is how the land was ceded, starting in 1808, all the way up to 1872. And you get to the final number of acres is 114,453,122. And in total, the Osage were paid $166,100 in cash, annuities, livestock, blah, 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 for that. So that's the payment of one penny, penny for every six acres. Going on to the next slide. Part of that Osage trail that runs right through Clayton, they do not share the exact location because often what we'll find is people come and try to loot or other way, or desecrate the land. But it's still very much part of our city. And again, recognizing this heritage, we are telling the true story of Osage Nation. And we can begin to understand and embrace their history and legacy as part of the story of Clayton. In far and by our history, good and bad, we move forward to build a better future together. So what we'd like to do is add historical markers and interpretive signage in a public space to educate people about Osage Nation, the original inhabitants of the land we sit on today. We're, at some point, have placement of public art or other interpretive content, but that's not in the current plan at this moment. And that we would do this work through collaboration with the Osage Nation. And in fact, they have already signed off to this proposal and, and get, made sure that all the data is correct. So the last criteria. We know that the displacement of indigenous people was accompanied by erasure and misrepresentation of their history and their culture. And many communities in the region and across the US are taking steps to commemorate and embrace local indigenous histories through engagement with native communities as we are doing here. And we're seeking to honor and acknowledge the indigenous people who historically occupied, nurtured, and thrived on these lands. This commemorative effort is intended to provide a space where the tradition of this living culture can be reflected upon. There's still a vibrant Osage culture in our state. So we're just looking for your agreement in principle at this point to this commemorative effort. Any questions?
This, and just to summarize, you know, the, the recommendation, which is what you saw, is, has been reviewed and, and approved, if you want, or reinforced by the CCF history, the Equity Commission, and also the Osage leadership in Oklahoma. So what we would move forward with next would be, on our process, would be, once this recommendation is approved, we would come back. The very first order of business is to develop the plaque. That's the most basic way of commemorating and it's consistent with all of our other commemorations. And then, once we get that accomplished and get that on order, if we approve it, we would then begin to talk about other ways, other additional ways to recognize. Because I think the, the Osage leadership very definitely is looking for more than a plaque. But it's really kind of a clean slate as to what, you know, we would wanna do. We, we've talked and I don't wanna get ahead of ourselves. We, we have met with Toni, Toni Siri, our Director of Parks, to talk about some things that could be done in Oak Knoll Park. And she had some good ideas about just a, a space that would be kind of a place that you would call the Osage Grove or whatever. Maybe you would do some plantings that were appropriate for there when they existed here, like they have done in Tower Grove Park. You know, we talked, we started talking in that realm, but that has not been addressed with the Osage themselves. And, and so we're just really at the beginning stage here of the recommendation. So if anybody, anybody have questions for Chris or me about this recommendation or? Yeah, go ahead. No questions, just thank you for the thorough work and the inclusion of a lot of voices and I look forward to see where this goes.
Yep, I support what you've described. Thank you.
Anything over here?
Sounds good.
I, I guess, I'm, I, I think it's a fine idea and I have no opposition to it. I'm having, I'm struggling though with trying to connect something that has such a broad reach over our entire state to Clayton specifically. And is there anything unique or special about Clayton, other than perhaps the trail? Or is it the kind of thing that it's one of many things that we would put in Remembrance Park as an example? I heard the Oak Knoll. So I think it's great to recognize, I'm just trying to understand how this fits in with the other kinds of things that we've done, because it doesn't have that kind of location-specific tie to it or uniqueness to it.
No, I'll let Chris see if she would like to say anything first.
Yeah, I, I would say in answer to that, yes, it was all over the state of Missouri, so everyone in the state of Missouri has a responsibility to acknowledge it. Obviously, Clayton didn't exist then. Saint Louis didn't exist then, this goes back to 500 AD, so. But recognizing the heritage of our country, and in, and in this case, our, the state of Missouri, and putting that into context to what we, what we've lost as far as the cultural richness of knowing this history, I think it's incumbent upon us to speak to it. We can't get caught up in our little Clayton world instead of the big world that exists around the entire country and in our state as well.
And I think you'll find, if you, so a great example is, if you haven't been to it, there's a great and very extensive, which I'm not sure we would be able to do something like this, we wouldn't, I don't think, but a very extensive installation at Tower Grove Park to commemorate the Osage presence in Missouri, but also in the location where Tower Grove Park sits. And so, you know, again, I think you, you, we put up these, you install these recognitions, they're really educational in nature at some point and people begin to understand, you know, the, the history of their community goes way beyond whatever we're doing and whatever we did. And it's enriching for the community and it's, and it's, it's the right thing to do.
So the, the only thing that strikes me is that this is such a vast thing. It seems like it would be something that would be appropriate, at least from the Osage point of view, that the state as a whole took on, the History Museum took on. It, I'm not opposed to any of this, I wanna be clear about that. It, it just, sometimes it feels like maybe it's not measuring up to the significance of the event to have a mere plaque, so.
Well, I, I think a mere plaque probably isn't significant enough and that's why we would hope that we would go on and do some other things. That's just step one. But I, I think you're right. I think the whole state of Missouri should, to, to do some kind of recognition of the Osage. Maybe they have, for all I know, I don't know, in the state capitol or whatever. But I, I, I don't disagree with that at all. But we're doing kind of our part by doing this. That's how I look at it, yeah.
I would just add, it seems like the, that we've been presented with like a place connection in that there is evidence that the Osage Trail passed through Clayton. Like, I didn't know that and I would love for people who. Like, I didn't know that, and I would love for people who are exposed to this to just be aware of that. It's like an actual real reminder that like there were indigenous people or other people here well before, like my ancestors, direct ancestors.
The Osage gave us, in their original information they gave us, they said that Oak Knoll Park would be the closest approximation to something that they felt would be significant. Yeah, so.
There were many trails throughout the state or throughout the land as well. But Rick, I would say, I agree with you that one plaque isn't enough. But I would hope that we, as leaders in the metro area, I would hope every community would have a plaque at some point or have some kind of recognition. And so, you know what they say about the thousand mile journey, and I feel like we should take the first step that we can.
Thank you.
I think it'd be great too, because I think the kids and, you know, the fourth graders really study Missouri history. And part of that at the beginning is talking about the Osage. And so, I think it would be great, I think it's a great idea to put it in the park. And hopefully, you know, obviously, the hope would be that kids might see a sign or something, some sort of plaque or, you know, marker that talks about it and, you know, generate questions. And it's a little bit more like outside the classroom. And, oh, you know, hey, Mom and Dad, guess what? This is what I'm learning about. And so, I think it's a great opportunity too.
Yeah, I agree.
Maybe it's the nature of plaques, plaques we have been tying to a place. Yet, the Osage, you know, but Black displacement happened all over the country as well. But we have a church that we're commemorating in the school. We don't always need a specific place, but if there's someplace in the state hasn't been recognized or in Clayton hasn't recognized, that's great. But there's still, this still is the weave of our history that is very good to bring forward and to recognize. I'm supportive of doing it too.
Very good. Jeff, did you have any comment?
I'm a history major at heart, so I'm all for putting as many plaques everywhere as we can put. I just want to make sure that I'm understanding, we are approving, putting up a marker that we don't know what it says yet, and we're committing to considering additional options if and when they come to us. Is that what's in front of us? I just want to make sure I'm understanding what I'm approving.
That is, and the marker copy will come later and you will approve it then. But I'm sorry, because maybe we should have gone through the process. I didn't realize that you were unfamiliar with it. But there's a whole process that we follow here.
And that's fine, I just wanted to make sure I kind of understood like what, when we presumably approve this, I just wanted to know what we were approving. So, we're approving, or authorizing the placement of a plaque to be later considered, consider the text later, and also to agree to consider other potential options that are also going to come later.
Yeah, we're not even asking you to approve a plaque at this point, we're just asking for approval.
Like a conceptual review, in theory, we support it, move forward and come back with more details.
That's what I got, I wasn't sure when I looked at the memo, it seemed to talk about the plaque, so I just wanted to make sure I understood what we're approving.
Yeah, so the, this process, if you take a look at it at some point, we do this, the group research is the topic. They write the recommendation, including the history and the research. They bring it to the, they bring it to the Equity Commission and the CCF History Group for review and any changes. And then, it comes here for us to review as, as right, a concept that we're, yes, we're going to recognize this history. We like that, we want to do that. And then, later, we'll come back with the how, which is generally speaking, always a plaque first, and then, there may be other things that follow. That would be recommended, not necessarily a given. Okay, and the language of the plaque, like you saw tonight, would be reviewed and approved by this board. Okay, does that make sense? Okay, okay, so we're, we are, looks like we are good on that. Do we need to vote? We can be in consensus? Okay, all right, all right, is that good? All right, I think everybody, we're in consensus, so we can move on. Chris, thank you so much for taking time out to do this for us. And for all your hard work on writing this and the many recommendations you've written. All right, so now we can go back to the original order of our agenda. And I think the first, again, we're in the City Manager's Report with the Monument Maintenance.
Yes, the Public Works Department is requesting approval of a construction contract for Monument Maintenance, fiscal year 24 project with the Harland Company. This project includes preventative maintenance, repair, and reconstruction of various subdivision monuments under city maintenance throughout the city. The project also includes repairs for a stone retaining wall along Maryland Avenue and repairs to a brick wall along the city parking lot at 103 North Central Avenue. Two bids were open on August 30th, 2024, and the Harland Company submitted the lowest responsive responsible base bid and the amount of $393,026. The final engineer's estimate for this work was $334,908. That was essentially our budgeted amount. To stay within the funds budgeted for monument repairs in fiscal year 24 and fiscal year 25, repair and or reconstruction of four monuments are recommended for removal from the project award. We will address these locations in fiscal year 2026 unless savings are realized during this year's project. Staff recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the ordinance authorizing a contract with the Harland Company in the amount of $324,754, plus a contingency of $10,154, totaling $334,908 for the Monument Maintenance Contract Fiscal Year 24. And Mr. Matt Malick, our Director of Public Works, is here this evening if you have any questions.
All right, thank you. All right, so open up for discussion. Yeah, any, any questions about this, comments?
Comments, just, Matt, thank you. I mean, I'm, I know the gentlemen on Maryland will be thrilled that this project is going forward, so thank you. And I'm still blown away by the cost of all this, but I know that monuments are important to our neighborhoods. You know, I think we have to probably think forward as we go forward, thinking about whether to potentially remove some that are beyond repair, I don't know, I think it's just something to think about as we go forward. So, but Matt, thank you for getting this together. And it is, I am even just seeing this big list, I'm amazed at all the ones that, there's a really big list, so thanks.
Right, hey, anything, Becky, anything?
Yeah, I just want to make sure I understand, so I am going to ask you questions, Matt. So, the, is the end, like, plan that we landed on for everything that's listed in this list that we were given to be done under this contract? Or some portion of it? That's what. And furthermore, is it, there are some references to FY 24 and then, or 25? So, like, so what is that, the timing? Obviously, I guess if we didn't do it in 24, that's ending, so we're going to do it in 25.
Correct, the intent is the list, everything will be done. When we originally put the scope together, we were basing off an inventory we did in 2019 or 20.
Yeah.
So, we included portions that we thought might be future years, but we wanted to go ahead and get the cost. It took a couple bids to get this kind of nailed down, it's a little different than we normally do. But we have a combination of funds through what was in the capital fund. We had the capital project specifically for the Maryland Wall. We had some insurance funds for one that was hit at Brentwood and Maryland. That would be some revenue, some operating revenue, and then, also the 25 CIP funds that we had allocated for this kind of the second phase of this. So, we're effectively getting nearly all of those that were scheduled for 24 and 25 under our original plan, just utilizing those various fund sources.
Okay. So, you know, my neighborhood will be really glad to see that Wyndown Dartford is on here. One question is that you have, you actually have two listed as in the Hillcrest subdivision, but the first one is 6309 Wyndown, which is over by more like Ellenwood or something.
You say two, number two or?
Yeah, no, sorry, there are two Hillcrest subdivisions on the list, M27 and M28. M27 is on the island at 6309 Wyndown, so I'm thinking it's, that's not Hillcrest, I don't think. I just.
It may have gotten flagged as that. But, yeah, 6309 Wyndown Island.
And was M28 taken out?
Why, yes, that one was taken out, pushed to 26.
Which one was taken out?
The Dartford Monument is not part of this, it's actually, if the reduced.
How do I know that?
Go to Exhibit C, not Exhibit B.
Exhibit C. Right, Exhibit B was the bid tabulation, Exhibit C shows the reduction in scope. We have an issue that we need to talk through on that monument that's at Dartford. Basically, there's an agreement between the neighborhood and the city. When the city took over that monument, the city's responsible for minor repair. The neighborhood is responsible for major repairs and replacement. This falls into the major repair and replacement category. So, I've had conversations with Stan over there, Stan Mulliville.
I know.
And so, it's an item we need to talk through because we can't just put it on and approve it because we have an agreement to the contrary. So, it would take action by the Board of Aldermen to change that arrangement before we would be authorized to pay for a full replacement of that monument. So, in my conversations with Mr. Mulliville, this is something that will be coming up at some point. I'm sure he's talked to you as well. Alderman Patel.
Oh, yes, very much so.
All right.
It comes up every time we see each other. But so, can you, the two distinct bids from Harland and Leonard Masonry then? I'm sorry that I over, that I misunderstood the exhibits. And so, but the two bids came from Harland and Leonard Masonry. Harland was overall obviously the responsive and low cost. However, Leonard Masonry seemed to think they could do the work on our Hillcrest Dartford Monument for $4,000. So, what do we make of that?
My, so, the location at Wyndown Dartford has two different monuments. We listed it as preventative maintenance. The one on the west side of the intersection is a reconstruction. We believe that the number put in by Harland included both of those monuments, the reconstruction and the preventative maintenance on the east side.
Okay. So, could we be more clear with Harland that we actually just wanted the preventive maintenance? And we want that to keep going forward so that we don't end up needing total reconstruction of both?
Yeah, since it, since it was put as that on the bid form, we tried to just reduce what we had and get confirmation from Harland. That is one of the items using either the contingency or savings realized along the way, we would propose more than likely to change order in as capacity allows.
Okay. All right.
It'd be similar for other things we may be pushed. If we can realize some savings, we bid it as three different items. It would be the preventative maintenance, the repair, or reconstruction.
Yeah.
We may realize some savings, we may have some that there's additional cost and we'll have to evaluate, but that was the hope.
All right, I'm okay with that, thank you.
Other questions or comments from?
I have no questions. Just a clarification, David had answered one of my other questions already. But on Exhibit C, when there's an item listed and there's a no dollar amount, but it's still on the list, does that mean it's included in one of the other monuments in the bid, or what does that mean?
There's a no dollar amount, could you give me one example?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So, let's say M42 Moreland's Westwood Wyndown Repair, and it's a zero. There, it's not a zero, there's just no number. So, M42, or the big reconstruction, M39. Reconstruction sounds to me like it should be a big number, but there's no number.
Yes, so those would be, I believe those fall to 26 due to the larger scale of the cost.
So, I should look at it as those aren't going to be done in the fiscal year as opposed to they're, just wanted to make sure I understood how to read.
Turn out except the original bid tab, I'm sorry, I'm looking at. Yeah, if there is no cost, that is not proposed to be done with this project this year. There's some of these that, since this was developed, we may have had repairs on that they've fallen out of needing to do a major repair. There was maybe a recent reconstruction due to an accident or something falling, but I would have to get more details on the specific.
Okay, I just, my only point is I don't want to represent to anyone that we're working on this one. In fact, that we're not going to work on those or we already did one or the other, so is what you're telling me.
Yeah, if there's no cost in there right now, there's not work planned as part of this.
That's all I have.
Just, Matt, for clarification, Exhibit B, I think we've covered some items. Let's just, Exhibit B that are not listed on Exhibit C. And I think the note said we removed four, so I'm just making sure. So, the ones that were on B, like some of the ones in Polo that aren't on C are the four we removed. And then, we've got the ones Rick's talking about that were basically also removed because we're not, because they've been zeroed out.
That's correct.
So, so there's more than four that have been removed from the original bid.
And that's my comment was, there may have been other work that had taken place where there's no longer work required on that. The four removed identified, yes, there's three in Polo and then the one at Wyndown Dartford.
Yep.
Other ones that will be planned for 26 would be M05, which is Crescent in Clayton. There's some larger reconstruction to take place on 29 and 30 at, in Claverack Park, Rodby Clayton, Crestwood Clayton. All of those combined will total closer to $200,000 depending on the final result.
Okay, thanks, I just want to make sure I understood that.
Sorry for all the confusion with all these.
Oh, that's.
I got one more.
Oh, go ahead.
I think I've heard you right, Matt, three of the four deferred signs are in Polo, did I hear that right? So, I think you recall like two years ago, there was a meeting with the Polo residents in which there was a lot of discussion about their monuments, and there are some key people in Polo who always complain about their monuments. So, just sort of generally speaking, the fact that three of the four signs that are deferred or in Polo will raise a question about why Polo? So, I just would like, in case that comes up, I guess I'd like an answer.
There is some question about, I know a couple of those monuments, the walls are not, they're on private property or the pillars are maybe on private, on the public side. Many of them are lower walls too, and didn't seem to be as much of a potential risk if they fell into worse repair within the next year. But overall, there, we feel like they can easily sustain FY 26 to have it completed then.
So, just deferred, not forgotten.
That's correct, the intent is, everything on the list will be addressed in some capacity from what we originally talked about in 2019 through the end of 2026. Thank you.
Oh, Matt, just, so we're all familiar with certain areas where we live, I think, is one of the things happening here. And so, just, I was a question similar to Becky's question, number, it's M33. You know, it's, the, obviously, Harland had the very much lower bid, but on that particular item, it's like 10 times higher than what Leonard put in. And I just wondered, is, and it's preventative, so I just wondered, is that a mistake or is that?
Sounds like this.
Yeah, preventative would be less invasive, lower cost per square foot, if you want to think about it that way. I would say Harland has the benefit of having worked in the city of Clayton many years and being familiar perhaps with it, that led to the difference, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, it might not turn out to be 34,000 then when they actually do it, is that what you're saying?
It may not be, being preventative maintenance, I'm trying to remember that exact location. That's probably one of the, if that's preventative maintenance, it's one of the larger walls. So, some cleaning on that could be for if it's the longer stretch, I'm thinking down along Clayton Road.
No, this is a Crestwood.
Oh, Crestwood Wyndown, I'm sorry, sorry.
So, it's just a post essentially with a little tiny wall near it. So, just, you know, I'm just noticing really the difference in the dollars is.
Yeah, and that's a situation too, I've looked at the details on that one. I think they were assuming what needed to be done there. They might know that, yeah, it's going to require a little bit more repair for us as we looked at the condition. Because we did ask each contractor bidding on us to visit the sites and look at each location.
Okay.
There were the condition.
Well, it looks a little out of whack for preventative, just saying. So, you'll check on that with some time, I'm not, I don't want to split hairs with you, whatever, but just to bring your attention to it. Okay.
And if it is, you know, we could be another way we can look at pushing if need be.
Yeah, oh, yeah, okay. Um, okay, well. I mean, I think the general idea is there's so many, there's so many details here with so many monuments. And they bid each one and they may not, they may or may not have done a real great detailed job on each particular monument. So it's kind of our job to make sure that they don't charge us more than they should.
On an individual basis, I think, yeah, you might see some variances, but when we looked at the overall picture, we felt like with what we had planned for the upcoming years, the budget.
Yeah.
We were, we were getting it.
The number.
Done and it's not getting any cheaper.
Okay, yeah, right, right. It's not getting any cheaper. I get that. Okay, uh, so I think, are we ready for to introduce, uh, yeah, okay.
Excuse me. I'll introduce bill number seven zero four two approving a contract with the Harland Company for the monument maintenance project to be read for the first time by title only.
Second. Okay, any discussion? Right, Mr. City Attorney.
Bill number seven zero four two, first reading, an ordinance approving a contract with the Harland Company for monument for the monument maintenance contract fiscal year twenty four.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Be opposed?
I move that the board give unanimous consent to consideration for adoption of bill number seven zero four two on the day of its introduction.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Let the minutes reflect the board is giving unanimous consent.
I'll introduce bill number seven zero four two approving a contract with the Harland Company for the monument maintenance project to be read for the second time by title only.
Second. Any discussion? City Attorney.
Bill number seven zero four two, second reading and consideration for adoption, an ordinance approving a contract with the Harland Company for the monument maintenance contract fiscal year twenty four.
Alderwoman McAndrew.
Aye.
Alderwoman Buse.
Aye.
Alderwoman Patel.
Aye.
Alderman Fader.
Aye.
Alderman Humble.
Aye.
Alderman York.
Aye.
Mayor Harris.
Aye.
Thank you.
Um, the Livable Communities Master Plan.
Yes, this is a resolution for consideration to adopt the Clayton Livable Community Plan. The consultant presented the final report at the September tenth, twenty twenty four Board of Alderman meeting. The Livable Community Master Plan is a joint effort between the City of Clayton's Departments of Public Works and Department of Parks and Recreation. This plan will update the twenty or two thousand seven Parks and Recreation Master Plan and two thousand nine Bikeable Walkable Communities Plan. The planning process commenced in May of twenty twenty three and wrapped up in August of twenty twenty four. There were four distinct phases of the project with a great deal of public engagement throughout. Following adoption of the plan, the Board of Aldermen and Parks and Recreation Commission will receive the plan recommendations and prioritize the action items. Some recommendations will require long range planning and budgeting, and others will be implemented with lower effort and cost. Additional public engagement may be needed on key items as implementation continues. Staff believes that the Livable Community Master Plan twenty twenty four was prepared with significant public input and is reflective of comments made by various stakeholder groups, commissions, boards, and the public. Staff further believes that the plan will serve the city well into the future and is ready to begin implementation. Staff recommends approval of the resolution as presented.
Good, thank you. And we had a presentation on this a couple of weeks ago. And I know it was, didn't get to talk a lot about it then, but it was a good kind of lead in to give us time to review it. So we'll just go around and see if anyone has questions or comments at this point. I think my my thought is on this is that, you know, it's 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 an incredible plan. It's been really well, really well done. The the real crux of our conversations are going to be on implementing it and what are the priorities and how are we going to do those things? So but again, we have questions and comments now.
No, that was just kind of going to be my comment though. Yeah, I kind of look forward to seeing what next steps were, like similar to what we did, I think, with the comprehensive plan. You know, understanding what those immediate goals are and what things will be more long term. But yeah, I mean, I think it's a great plan. It it was very easy to read and go through. And um, so yeah, I I look forward to seeing what staff works through to, again, see what our um, short term and long term goals will be from it.
Yeah, there's there's a lot, there's a lot there. I'm just going to make a couple of comments, you know, one being like with, like I told Melissa, we can access partnerships beyond just the ones that they identified. And I I hope that we can do that. Um, some of the things that I that I wonder about, I hope that we do get both a base and a goal versus just saying, you know, measure fix successes, how much money we spend on something. Or for example, with ADA compliance, I'm sure staff will do this. Where are we now? We need better ADA compliance. Well, great. Well, are we almost there or not versus just? It's just just a few more metrics behind it. I think will help will help a lot. And and help us measure success and be accountable as well. I think we're going to have some big issues. As we talk about this, this focus on vibrancy and walkable and bikeable streets, we also try to keep, we we have car issues. And we're going to have to talk about if we were truly a streetcar city at one point, how are we going to reduce the need for cars within the interior of our city so that we can have the open streets and all these things? Those are going to be bigger decisions that that we should be ready for. And also, as we talk about ourselves being a regional destination, I I don't really know what we each think that means. And even with the Center of Clayton, as we look for non resident versus resident membership, there's there there again, there's there's got to be data there. Where is the right spot where we can, it still supports our community? Yeah, we're able to to serve our larger community and have the resources to offer broad programming. There's a sweet spot. It's not just keep increasing, increasing, increasing membership. And I hope that we can, you know, figure out what that metric is to to um, find that. Something else I found interesting is they talk about making sure we have connectivity with our with our buses and MetroLink. We have to work on our culture. If we want Clayton residents to use those things, we have to make an effort to make that happen. Uh, you know, for example, something that always came up, the school district, every five or six years, people talk about busing across. Whether if if you live on the east side, parents will contact and how do we get our kids to the high school? If you live on the west side, it's why don't we have buses to Wyndown? And then it goes away for a while and comes up again. For a while, MetroLink did give passes. I don't know if it's supported by the city or the school district to help kids from the east side ride a bus down and it gets very close to the high school. If we're serious about connecting to our public transportation, we need to start giving exposure and and address it in a more intentional way than just hoping it happens because it's not the culture of our city right now. Those are just some of the comments. Something else in here was mentioned of Handley House, and we had talked about focusing in what on how we want to handle Handy, Handley House going forward and versus just having it a goal to make it more active. We still need to have that conversation.
Yeah, thanks. I support adoption of the plan and I would just like to share, I did have one resident who reached out to me um, who actually read the plan and expressed concern that feedback they had given in a public meeting did not appear to be emphasized in the way that they hoped. And so just for all of your awareness, I would like to share with you the idea that um, in order to make our streets safer for pedestrians and vehicles and like just a smoother transportation network, um, there it was a belief that considering um, a couple of them becoming one way could be really significant in improving that. So just want to get that on the record, make sure we're thinking about it. Um, and so that's all.
Very good. Okay, over here.
Uh, I missed the presentation when I was out of the country, but I did have an opportunity this week to review the plan. I think it's a very good plan. Obviously, so much depends on priorities and implementation, so that's where we go next. I do, I I'd made the observation and I'd make it again as we particularly look at our environment for cycling that short term, I still think we need to look at whether what whether what we have now could be made safer than what it is right now. Uh, this whole idea of when I was in Europe in some major cities, seeing how they handle their bike lanes, particularly in terms of different colors for the bike lane, more 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 significant signage. I think there are a number of things. We again have been fortunate. You know, I've said before, residents always talk about it's just an accident waiting to happen. And we keep saying, well, fortunately, it hasn't happened. But we shouldn't be naive to think that there isn't some risk involved in what we have right now. And I I think we can do a better job, and I would hope that would be one priority as we look at how to expand the system, also looking at what we have right now. And can we do a better job making it safer, more obvious to people? And so I would hope that would be a priority. Other than that, I'm, I think we should go forward.
Yeah, Rick.
Um, I think it's a very comprehensive plan. And so um, I appreciated its structure and how it reads. I want to just emphasize something I think that Susan had just said. Um, one of the things that I think has come clear for me at least is the theme um, of of the walkability, the pedestrian safety, um, the busy roads, the whole lifestyle aspect. It's given a, it's made it a a bigger priority, I think, um, or at least a common theme and focus with the residents. So when we have coffees or gatherings or all these community events, um, this seems to be a recurring topic. Now we have some structure built around it. And so I think that's a a great outcome out of all this. My questions really are are sort of the who and when. I I know the what we have to figure out and how to prioritize it, but just broadly speaking, is this something that gets put to department heads and then goes to boards and commissions or to us or just big picture, what's sort of the the next step on the who and then the when? Is this something that we'll try to start on this calendar year or what's what's the idea there?
Yeah, we'd like to have a meeting by by year end, certainly with the Board of Aldermen to discuss those priorities. Uh, this one's a little bit different than the uh, comprehensive plan in that we have really two departments that are more or less splitting this. And of course, on the Parks and Recreation side, there's conversations that will need to be had with that particular commission. So we'll sit down as staff and and kind of walk through how we want to have those priority and implementation discussions. It's just set up a little bit differently than than what we've done uh, with the comprehensive plan and figuring out when do we plug in the Parks and Recreation Commission on on some of these items. Uh, I would envision some sort of joint meeting in your future uh, to go through those as well. And if you look through this, you know, the comprehensive plan, those are really big items. A lot of those take a lot of work and a lot of public engagement. Um, there are a lot of things in here that we could accomplish very quickly uh, at a low cost. And so identifying those right away with the Board of Aldermen and Plan and then Parks and Recreation Commission is is going to be one of our top priorities because we think we can pick off quite a few of these uh, almost immediately. But the bigger picture items, you know, we need to talk and 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 figure out from a priority standpoint, you know, where does the Shaw Park area, the the ice rink area fall into this? I know that's been on a lot of people's minds as we went through this process, a lot of residents, that's what they wanted to talk about was what's going to happen there. So I think framing those larger discussions is going to be out of the gate. One of our, one of our big priorities, along with those really small, easy to 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 do items. So.
Right, thank you.
It's all coming up.
So generally, it's fine. I I I will go to the points I've made before and David kind of alluded to is what I'm concerned about is passing a plan, a plan that we can't afford. And as we've covered before, we've maxed out all our Parks and Rec sales tax. We're going to max out potentially our capital improvement sales tax. So my concern is as we get into this, the 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 little ones we can pick off that David was saying with low cost, that's great. But we have a plan that we don't currently have a designated amount of money to pay for any of it. So that's my concern's not with the plan. My concern is actually how we pay for the stuff we're now telling residents that we want to do. So that's, I would just leave that there because I think that's going to continue to be a challenge for us on both these plans. So.
That that is always the challenge. Were you going to say something else? Okay. Yeah, I mean, that's definitely been something that I think we've talked about. At least I know I've mentioned it a few times since we decided to do this plan. You know, what are we going to do at the end when we can't afford it? But um, I think there are definitely things we can't afford and um, we can't forget that at some point we do have support from our community for certain things and we can, we can ask our community for that support through the community foundation and and other other ways. So um, I think, you know, there's hope for some of these projects, even though we we look at our budget and we don't have surpluses. I I I just want to, I just want to compliment, you know, Tony and Matt and the whole team. This this is a great plan. I mean, I don't think there's any stone left unturned. And everything fits together so nicely. There's a lot of overlap here on public works and parks, and that's something that's not that easy to just coordinate and make it look seamless. But you did that. Uh, I I think there there's some big sort of big ideas in here that we we will think about. I I can see this, a lot of topics for our next retreat coming out of this plan. Our role as a regional hub for recreation. What we are, we are that. So what do we do with that, you know, and 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 honestly, why is it our responsibility to provide these facilities for the region? I mean, how can we get the region to support that more than they are right now? Because again, we come down to the fiscal part of it. We don't, you know, we we talk about getting business community support in here. We don't have a chamber now. So how are we going to organize ourselves around the businesses to support them and get them to participate and also help us? And that that's kind of a big, a big nugget. We 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 heard in here that, I mean, everyone loves events. Everyone loves the events we do. They want more. And how are we going to do that? We're we're getting to the point where sort of maxed out on events, both with public works, you know, uh, workers, but also with Gary and his team. So I know it's mentioned somewhere that maybe we need an extra person. And that's again, a big idea that we, if we want to be that vibrant community, we're going to have to support the means to get there. And I think we want to be that. We maybe we have to figure out how to charge for some of our events or whatever. We gotta we gotta wrap our arms around that and embrace it and move forward with it because it also it impacts so many of our other goals, like being more welcoming or being more diverse. All those things. So I know, I just, I just can't say enough about the plan. I think it's great. You know, I know we'll see priorities and that I'm I'm very eager to get that done. I was hoping we could do it really soon. We might have some other things, you know, clogging up our calendar, I understand, but um, you know, I'm I'm eager to get to that. So uh, thank you very much for all your work and we'll be awaiting the priority discussion. Yeah. So at this point, we just need to approve this plan. And we had Kathleen Gund was online, but has she raised her hand at all? I can't see her here. Okay. Looks like she has no question. So uh, okay. Alderman McAndrew.
I move to approve resolution number twenty twenty four dash eighteen, adopting the Livable Communities Master Plan.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, very good. Again, great work. I'm sorry Tony's not here to hear all the kudos. Matt, you'll pass them on to her. Uh, and Anna, and Anna, I've left you out, Anna, I'm sorry. I I view you, I've got you on the comprehensive plan bucket and that, okay. All right. So next is the Green Dining Alliance Program.
Yes, at the July sixteenth, twenty twenty four Sustainability Advisory Committee meeting, the committee unanimously recommended that the city fund one hundred percent of the costs for restaurants to join the Green Dining Alliance or GDA. The committee presented information on the GDA and the proposed program at the September tenth, twenty twenty four Board of Alderman meeting. The Sustainability Advisory Committee also discussed the potential formation of a green dining district in the city of Clayton. For a district to be established, twenty five percent of independent restaurants within a specific commercial area must be GDA certified. Becoming a green dining district would bring recognition to Clayton as well as increase visibility for the participating restaurants. With an estimated fifty to sixty eligible restaurants, the cost for one hundred percent participation would be between twelve thousand five hundred dollars and fifteen thousand dollars for initial certification. And then ten thousand dollars and twelve to twelve thousand dollars for the subsequent recertifications. This would be a reimbursement program and would be subject to annual appropriation by the Board of Aldermen. The Sustainability Advisory Committee has recommended that the Board of Aldermen approve funding for the Green Dining Alliance Program, thereby supporting restaurant certification and sustainable waste management practices in Clayton.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Thought you wanted to tell me something. Uh, all right, I'll open the discussion. Uh, any questions, comments? We'll go around.
Um, well, I mean, I think part of our, part of the plan, we were just talking about, our residents do want to see us embracing sustainability. So I think it's important that we continue to raise awareness in our city and certainly support restaurants to provide more sustainable waste management practices. So I would be supportive of this. to provide more sustainable waste management practices. So I would be supportive of this.
I'm looking forward to us moving forward on this. In Clayton, we have, we even have a couple of restaurants with other locations that do have the certification, but they haven't gotten it for the Clayton one. So I think there are a couple that may be you know, primed to get involved quickly and the, I, I'll be very, I'll be thrilled if we come even close to spending a chunk of the money that we're, that we're all getting toward this. I did have a couple language changes and I'll make an amendment when it comes time to that. I was concerned that under, or maybe I make it now. A motion for an amendment. I was concerned that under the paragraph one, it says the city, city shall reimburse restaurants 100% of the, the, the fees related, associated with GDA. And what we, what I think we really want to reimburse is the fees paid to G, to the Alliance, not the cost of taking over to composting and everything else. So I just had asked.
Oh, that feels like a good catch.
I just asked that be clarified. So I can make a motion for amendment now or after people make their comments. I don't know that. Let's do it. Let's just go ahead and after people make all their comments, we may have other things that change. Okay.
Great. I totally support this. I would just reiterate, I'm sure you all caught this, but we only need 25% to become a green dining district. And so it is likely that our actual costs will be something like half if we're lucky of what's here. And if we are fortunate enough to get greater participation, I'd be thrilled to spend this money on this. I know plenty of people who actually choose where to eat out based on participation in this program. And so I do think it is actually a, a, a vehicle that can attract people who may or may not otherwise think about coming into Clayton to eat.
Okay, very good. Comments, questions?
I also missed this presentation when I missed this one meeting. However, I, I guess my gut thought is I know less about sustainability than do the members of the Sustainability Advisory Committee. If they are in favor, it, I would be in favor of it as well. And I'm certainly pleased to hear from Alderman Patel that perhaps the cost would be somewhat less than what is projected here. That's, that's always a positive. So I would support it.
I'm just, I'm supportive. I'm just curious about David, if you've had the opportunity to think about how we would promote and administer this, or is that something that you'll think about after we approve it?
Yeah, so we'll, we, we talked about it a little bit, but not, not in any great detail. We, we do have a really good list of restaurants here in the city. So we'll, we'll be reaching out to them and sending letters and making calls if we're not hearing from anybody.
Is it relatively easy? That's really what I was curious about, or is it a burden?
This one will be.
Okay, yes. That's all. Part of that was my question is that I was trying to think about what the, what additional cost the city may wind up having just in terms of admin, but it sounds like it's not going to be much. The only thing I would add is tacking on to Susan's amendment is I'd like to build a cap as to how much it's going to cost. I don't, I'm concerned if we're going to build into the approval certification and renewable certifications, and it's going to be in the budget every year. We all know things tend to grow. And I think once it gets in the budget, we'll completely forget that it's there. So I prefer to have through the process, just a cap on what we're going to have to spend for this. And then we have to actually approve anything higher than that. I don't, again, I don't think the dollar amount bothers me all that much. It's the idea that all these little programs start adding up and we'll probably never look at it again if it's not somehow capped that we have to some point. It's like three years from now, when we do the budget, it'll still be the same number unless we approve, unless we have to go through a separate process to increase the cap.
What, what cap would you propose?
I'm fine with the 100% that they're talking about, the $12,000 or whatever. Like it's, it's, it's more about just making sure we look at the number and it doesn't become more over the years than we expect it to be.
So would that mean you would consider offering an amendment to like, do we, would doing that be meaningful? Like if he would make an amendment to cap it at the maximum amounts listed in this proposal, then it would have to come before us again if we got like twice as many restaurants in Clayton and they all wanted to do this program or what? Or is it just part of the budget process?
Or if they increase their rates and then it was going to be $15,000 or $20,000 to recertify everybody. That's just what I want to make sure that it doesn't just get lost in the annual budget process.
I'd rather, I'd rather do it this way, rather than including all that in the resolution or, or changing any of that, or even including it in the approval. If you all can just tell me what number you, you're comfortable with for fiscal year 25, we'll include that in the budget amendment. So you'll see that part amount be added to this year's annual budget. I will tell you that going forward, we're going to look at participation. We're going to look at how much we have budgeted. When we do the budget, we go through every single line item we have. So this is something we'll take a look at. If participation significantly lower than the budgeted amount, then we'll bring that to the board's attention if we need to make a reduction. But as far as this initial year, this isn't something that's in the fiscal year 25 budget. We could add it through a budget amendment. If you just let me know what that amount is, that's what the first quarter budget amendment will reflect.
I mean, I'm not concerned about this year. What I'm concerned about is that in that number one, we're going to, we're proving the ability to pay for all the recertifications for however long we want this program. And I'm just concerned about what the recertifications are going to cost three years from now, four years from now. And it could start to, I mean, it's a good problem to have, but it's still a cost that we're, that we're consenting to now for future years and have.
We never are approving future budgets in passing ordinances or resolutions. So like to David's point, this will come up before us most, I mean.
It'll be tucked in the budget that, let's be honest, when we get to a, a line item, I'm probably not going to look at a $10,000 line item in the budget.
Well, two says reimbursement shall be made only if sufficient funds have been appropriated by the board for this program. So that's when we appropriate what we want.
And in the resolution, we specifically say, correct, in the sentence after that, that this is subject to annual appropriation as well. I, I think Alderman, your, 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 your point is you just want to make sure that we're, we're keeping tabs on what the participation rate is and then what the cost of the program is over time. And if there are changes there, I mean, we could certainly notify you if, if that starts to occur. But it is subject completely to board's annual appropriation. So if this is something you want to roll back or change in some way, let us know and, and we'll incorporate that in the budget accordingly.
Paragraph number three also specifies that the city reserves the right to modify or terminate based on financial or other considerations from time to time.
I think what we're talking about is just the difference between having it identified in this resolution versus just as a practice of, of the staff and the board to, to make a point to track it and review it each year. And so that becomes down to a matter of trust ourselves and our staff to, to do that. I do, but I, I'm okay with changing it as well. I don't feel strongly about it one way or the other. We know what the budgeted amount would be this year, right? So it's, it's, the most would be 15,000. So that we know, and that we know is going to go into our budget amendment. So that's this year. So.
And then based on how much gets used this year, you'll be able to predict for sure how many are going to need annual recertification. Like that will be clear at any given time. And then we'll be like looking at trends and estimating for annual, for initial certification.
Application.
Yeah, right.
So, so going forward in subsequent years, we should expect, I mean, at, at best, $10,000 to $12,000 of recertifications and then some additional costs for new restaurants who also want to be certified, whatever that number might be.
I think this is, this is expecting full participation, you would see recertification at $10,000 to $12,000. So I think we could reasonably expect, you know, if we got half participation, that would be excellent. So I, I really think this first year, you're probably looking at.
Going to be a quarter to half.
Yeah, you're looking at a quarter to half.
Restaurants right now, right.
Yeah.
These, these amounts that you see here are full participation by every restaurant, initial year and every subsequent year.
Yeah. And one other thing to keep in, to, to keep an eye on as well is again, we were traveling state out of Marriott and they had a big sign telling everyone that there's, there are zero waste restaurants. So, you know, in their restaurant. So again, when we're out talking this up with restaurants, they do want the publicity. It is becoming something people look for. So if we put it in City Views or something else as people sign up, I think that would be helpful as well. Okay, I'm, I'm going to make, I, I move to amend the resolution to support Clayton restaurants and joining the Green Dining Alliance. To correct the spelling of resolve in the therefore clause and section one, paragraph one, to read as follows, the city shall reimburse restaurants for 100% of the restaurant fees paid to GDA for certification and recertification, subject to appropriation of such funds by the Board of Alderman.
Okay.
So, all right, so we've had an amendment proposed and seconded.
If the maker would consider a friendly amendment, fees paid by the restaurant to the GDA so that the fees have to be paid first and we reimburse as opposed to funding the first initial payment of fees. 100% of the fees paid by the restaurant to the GDA for certification and recertification, comma, subject to appropriation, et cetera, et cetera.
So moved. All those in favor of the amended?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and now we would move to approve the resolution as amended?
I'll move to approve resolution number 2024-19 as amended to support Clayton restaurants and joining the Green Dining Alliance Program.
Second. Any discussion? Hey, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, very good. Wonderful. I think that is all of our business on our agenda. We can do a roundtable and I also think we, we want to discuss the timing of some of our upcoming meetings for the Washington University overlay. So let's get that out of the way first, shall we? David, do you want to review the situation?
Sure. So what we have is last night, we had favorable recommendations on the Concordia CUP and then the text amendments and rezoning for both the Big Ben overlay and the South 40 overlay. And so we had advertised a public hearing for October 22nd and that posting should be out already, Anna? Okay, that's what I thought, as far as the, the publication on that, because it has to be 15 days in advance. So we had gone ahead and, and sent that out. I understand there's now a conflict on October 22nd. So just wanted to have a conversation about where we go with the dates from here. We can certainly notify the public and post everywhere that the public hearing will not occur on the 22nd and, and post a, a new date to let the board know of upcoming dates. We have Friday, the 18th, which is a Friday's strategic session set aside. The mayor and I had talked about a few topics for that. But that's a, a date that's on the calendar. The board meetings for the month of November, fall on November 12th and then November 26th. And I would just note that November 26th is the Tuesday in Thanksgiving week. So just two days before Thanksgiving. And so those are just some things to consider here. If, if we end up first reading this and having the public hearing on November 12th, again, November 26th would be the next date where you start to get into really the, the holiday season here.
Excuse me, David, for a second. November 12th is also the School District Long Range Planning Community Forum, if my calendar is right. So it may, we may want to think twice about asking citizens to try to attend both. Because they're going to want to hit both. So just sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to kind of.
That's fine. And then when you get into December, December 10th is the, uh, the regular meeting that we have scheduled there. The fourth Tuesday of December is just, December 24th. It's still Christmas Eve. So our dates start to get pretty tricky as we get into the holiday season. So I just wanted to talk through and make sure the board was comfortable with the meeting dates moving forward for this. But as I said, we do have the recommendations from the Plan Commission and, and we're ready to move forward as directed by the board. So I'll open it up for any kind of discussion on, on what dates we should set. The one thing I will tell you is that for a public hearing, we need at least 15 days advertise notice.
Well.
Yeah, because we got to hit the paper. Yeah, we got to get it out to the paper in time to get it actually posted on a Friday.
Just out of curiosity, what's the conflict on the 22nd?
The conflict is that I had a work, work, travel come up that absolutely precludes me from being at the meeting either in person or in Zoom. And I would very much like to be present the first time that the Board of Alderman discusses this in public session as I have attended like all but one of the meetings in the last year and a half. And so I, I actually have a, a proposal that, because I don't know, I've talked to a few members of the board and I think that we have a lot of conflicting ideas and feedback from residents that we are trying to wrestle with and complicated processes to understand. And I suspect some of us are at different places on this. I, I definitely sense that we don't have any like consensus on the path forward from my personal, like perspective at this point. And so, and one of the frustrations that I've had throughout the process has been like the lack of my ability as an elected official to like communicate with the public in some type of forum that they come to. I mean, I email people, I like put posts on Facebook, I talk to people, whatever. But like, you know, the actual, like now that there's like a real plan that's been considered and people can look at the like ability to dialogue and actually like get in discussion with residents and our neighbors has, has been really valuable. And from my perspective, that's really only happened in the last week or two to any like substantive degree. And so the, my suggestion would be that we consider taking time in the discussion session on the 18th to talk about it as a board, to hear kind of like where each of us, for each of us to be able to talk about like what we've heard and what we're thinking, to be able to ask questions of the staff openly. I, I'd much prefer that we not do that in like one-off private conversations and that our residents have a chance to hear how we're wrestling with this. And that then on the 18th, we'd be prepared to like give direction to the staff potentially on like what the next step would be. That's just an approach that I thought of today that I would like to recommend that we consider.
Well, one just basic question for everybody. If we I was going to ask, you know, who would be available to meet? We need to make sure we have, you'd be missing on the 22nd. But would somebody else be missing on the 12th or the 26th of, you know, November? And that, so I need to know, we would need to know that.
Yeah, I agree.
Before we decide to move dates. So this, I know, but I'm, it's news about the forum at the school district. So that's a definite big consideration.
Yeah, I would imagine that Bridget will need to be there on the steering committee, maybe.
I mean, I think that this takes priority.
I'm also just being respectful to citizens who may want to go to both. They won't.
Yes, I think that is a thing to consider.
Yeah, I won't. I mean, I won't. I don't feel like I, I think it's more just, I would imagine it's kind of like, I mean, I think the consultant, I think it will mimic a lot of what was at the center of Clayton where there's like small roundtable and people are having discussions. So yeah, so I, I mean.
Cool.
We could conceivably do it.
I mean, I think so. I, I just don't. And I don't know how we disrupt our process for that. I mean, I think it's very important, but there will be other ways for people to provide feedback. I mean, I, I haven't seen other dates. I mean, I know there's going to be forums at each of the schools. So I, I mean, I think there will be more. I, I, I guess I admittedly, I don't know what all the different dates are, but yeah.
If, if all of this is open, I'm less concerned. I was, when I saw it on there, I was thinking it was more like some big presentation that everybody may want to get feedback on. And I'm like, well, if that's the case, we've got the school district asking for feedback, the same that we're asking for feedback. And I figured that was going to be it. But if it's just one of those, come and provide comments, then I'm less concerned about.
I think the idea is they'll, I think they're trying to, at our next meeting, I think they're trying to get some ideas as to like some bigger ideas, you know, not a Claris project, but something bigger that the district needs. And I think they want to be able to provide, like then tell the public, hey, we're thinking about this big idea. This is one of these things that we think the district needs and this is a big project. So.
Can I just ask, just for clarification, on the 18th, I think as you presented it, David, originally. David, originally there was going to be a discussion about the Big Ben overlay as well as Concordia, correct?
Uh, no, that Friday, Saturday.
On October 22nd, I'm sorry.
That's correct. October 22nd is the...
If the decision is not to take up on October 22nd, the Big Ben overlay, would the Concordia matter still be on that agenda for October 22nd?
You mean South 40.
No, you mean, you mean the CUPs, the CUPs, yes.
We would talk to Concordia, but we would likely push all of it to the same agenda.
Okay, I just, I want to make sure if we're pushing it all off and I guess the South 40, you know, I mean, everything would be pushed.
Yeah, I mean, I think we could ask Concordia the applicant if they, what they prefer.
And I would imagine you'd want to be present for that as well.
Yeah. It's less, it's much less controversial.
I don't have any meeting date conflicts, but I do, I'm going to be traveling on the 18th and so I won't be, I'll be available by Zoom, I can participate, I just won't be here.
Okay. I mean, other thoughts? I don't know.
I mean, I absolutely support Alderman. I mean, I'm happy to move it. I, you know, I don't think people, I under, of course, understand our need to post everything, but I think people, I think it will be easy to communicate to people when the next meeting will be. And if it's not the 22nd, then it will be the 12th, right? So I mean, I'm supportive of that. I think it's important to have the older persons here who are, you know, directly impacted. I mean, the residents, you know, they've been doing the most communication with residents, so I think it's very important, so.
Right. Anything? No?
I just have a question about the, and I think it makes sense, at least at some level, that the meeting on the 18th would be one where you could have a work session and go through this. I do think we have to consider that if I were a resident, I'm not sure I would feel necessarily that that's treated the same way as a regular board meeting. I'm not sure that how the residents will feel about an extensive discussion at a work session. Now, you certainly can get the word out there. I still would suspect some people will say that that's sort of a lack of transparency on our part, that we've, we've start monkeying around with this ordinance at a work session as opposed to a regular meeting. I just think when you get into zoning disputes, people very quickly make accusations that aren't actually always accurate. So I think we, we just have to be careful about how we treat that meeting on the 18th, because it's not what people normally, they know we meet on the, you know, the second and fourth Tuesday of every month. Nobody knows we even have work sessions for the most part, so I think we just have to be careful how that's promoted and how people feel about that. And do they feel like they have an opportunity to participate because it's a work session? It's just, it's a different animal and I think we need to think about it. Plus the fact, as we learned tonight, it's pretty difficult to draft even what goes on a sign when you have 10 people in the room. I would anticipate that this meeting on the 18th, it's not only, you know, obviously honest part of that too, now we're going to start trying to tweak language, et cetera, with 11 people in the room. So it's just, it's the logistics of this that concern me. But I do agree, I certainly would not want to sort of push everything off until November because I think with something like this is a hot item and it clearly is, the longer it goes unaddressed, the more it festers in a way that's not productive. And I think we owe it to people to get on with this. And so however, however we can get that done, but, and once you get into the Thanksgiving and the Christmas season, I don't, this is, I realize this is not a rush in a sense. We have no other than Concordia. This can wait, but this is a hot item, obviously, and I think letting it go for two months, being sort of unresolved is not a good thing.
Other thoughts from anybody?
I mean, I mean...
Gary said, okay.
The only thing I would say is, one, I want to make sure everybody's here, which I completely agree with moving. So my only thought with the work session to, with, to piggyback on what Gary said is, it's also tends to be when people are still working, three to five. So if people want to come, they may not be able to be here. I also asked a question from a process standpoint, despite that pretty much all of us have had some version, if not large exposure to resident comments. Should we be having the discussion session after we've received formal feedback from citizens to us as a board, as opposed to having a discussion session before we actually get feedback from residents? I, we all know they're there, we've all, either we're at the planning commission or we watch the videos, but I'm just thinking through, again, sort of Gary's point of like, it's a hot issue, let's make sure we do it in a flow that makes sense. And I'm not sure if a discussion session before we get feedback is necessarily the best flow, but we can get by it.
Backing feedback, I'd be happy to forward some video and you can watch the plan commission meeting.
Oh, no, I watched the planning commission meetings, all like 10 hours. I'm just saying like, if I was a resident and we were all, and again, from a scheduling standpoint, we got to do, we got to do to move it along, I think. But if I'm a resident and I think that we as electeds are going to have the first public discussion about what this may be on a Friday afternoon before we've actually formally heard feedback from them, I could see how some may not like that. It may not be enough for us to change it because I also don't want to be like sitting around Christmas time in the holidays trying to do it. And I don't think anybody wants to wait till the spring. So, you know, what I'm saying may not be accomplishable just because of the schedule, but I just at least wanted to throw it out there.
Right, and I think that the whole idea of a working session with any board is a chance for the board to come together and talk and it's public and it's not a time for people to be making comments and things like that. So yes, what you're saying is valid, people will, whatever we do, there may be, you know, feelings that it wasn't fair that we're doing something, but everything is public, everything is noticed. If we need that time to talk with each other, it's the only time we have. And that's kind of what you were saying too, Jeff, we have to do it, we have to do it. So that's the question. Do we, if we want time to talk with each other before the board meeting where we're actually having it presented, we should have it on Friday. If we don't feel we need that additional time, then we don't need to. So that's really the question. Right. I mean, I'm, I'm only torn because I'm very eager to move this forward rapidly, because I feel like the longer we hang it, we keep it hanging out there, the more we kind of extend the, the angst of not only ourselves, but the community. And that is something that I don't want to do. I fully support your presence at all of the sessions because you have been very involved in this from day one and you've been to almost all the meetings, as you said. So I think your voice is important and I will ask this, knowing that you've already thought of it, you can't do a Zoom, you can't come in by Zoom on the 22nd. Okay, I know you've thought of that, but I feel compelled to ask, okay. So, you know, I also do feel that having this discussion, it is public and a Friday session is, is a little bit problematic because it's A, short notice, kind of, and B, we told people we'd do it on the 22nd, now we're not, now we've moved it to the 18th, that's... So I just...
We're not moving the public hearing to the...
No, but they don't, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
So I just think, you know, the optics or something, we have to be careful about communicating. I just think we'll have to go overboard on that somehow. So I don't think we really have a choice. If we want you there, we have to do it. And it will benefit us to discuss this as a group, I think.
So can I ask, this, maybe you just said this and I missed it, or maybe it's a variation on what you just said, but if part of the issue is having a discussion at a work session, could we have the discussion on the 22nd? We're not going to vote on it, but could we have the discussion? That still excludes you and that's, I recognize that. But what I'm, what I'm trying to address in that variation is that it's an announced meeting, it's at a normal time, we haven't talked about this as a group. It would seem, to the extent that it excludes Becky, then it's a bad thing and I get that. So, but to the extent that it's having at a meeting time that's otherwise normal, then it fits.
I think we're down to the lesser of two evils here.
Yeah, no, I mean, I understand, like I don't, I don't want you to feel like hamstrung by my work that I do, like, but you know, and so, you know, I just, the, I guess... I think the 22nd, like, my sense is that we have a lot of varied opinions, that we are not very close to having something that is ready to be approved by a majority of this board. And I would like us to sooner than later discuss that in public sess, like in a public setting, that while people may not be able to come, it will be recorded, it will be shared, it won't be a public hearing. And because I would prefer that you not do it on the 22nd for the first time without me, and I certainly wouldn't want to wait till the November 12th to talk about it at all. So that's my request. I don't, like, I don't think that the delay that I'm proposing is that, I, my sense is that residents will not be like upset to have this delayed. They will be upset to have it pushed forward. The sense is that we are pushing something forward for the benefit of an institution that they don't trust and, and that is the risk that we are trying, to the narrative that we are trying to counter, that I would like us to try to counter. And this is my, a proposal I have about how to do it.
I think, I think, yeah, so I think I'd like to suggest, yes, let's, let's do it, let's have a discussion session on the Friday session. I'd like to request that Mr. O'Keefe is there, okay? And, and you know, I think there's some questions we all have that I think you're aware of, but if not, we can go over that. But I think that session will not be, it'll only be half as productive as it could be if we don't have some, some of those questions addressed in terms of, you know, the, the limitations of the CUP, et cetera. And we can go over that, you know? I know David's talked to you about it, but so, so if we have that in agreement, I think that's really critical. And, yeah. Anna, you're available to be there on the 18th, are you? Okay. All right, so.
Mayor, I would, I would still suggest, maybe I'm piggybacking on some of the comments, that we do meet on the 18th. I think we should meet on the 22nd, if only to hear comments from the public. I do think, someone called me today, who's actually surprisingly from our ward, who I thought wouldn't care, and said basically, well, it's one thing what the Plan Commission does, but you guys are elected, you care about certain things, Plan Commission is kind of a technical body, you're bigger picture kind of stuff. And so I think it's sort of to Jeff's point, I think it would be very helpful for us as soon as possible to hear what the comments of the community are to the Board of Alderman, which while similar to the Plan Commission, I think are not exactly the same. And I certainly would not suggest that certainly we take any vote on the 22nd. I'm not even sure I would suggest we have any kind of first reading, but at least having advertised it, we would give people the opportunity to come to the board, express their points of view. I think that, that's a better idea. I candidly think canceling the meeting, especially after we've advertised it, sends the wrong message. I think it's not, it's not moving the project forward. So I certainly respect, you know, the issue that older woman Patel has, but I think hearing from the public, that's all we're going to do on the 22nd. Doesn't necessarily, we don't even have to respond, but I think we, we ought to give those people who were already told that they would have the opportunity to come before us on the 22nd. It will obviously not be the last time they come before the Board of Alderman, there'll probably be at least two more times, but I don't think we should cancel the 22nd.
The issue would...
No, 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 go ahead.
Oh, David wants to say something.
If I could really quickly on that, but my only concern would be if we have the work session on the 18th and there's significant changes that are suggested or recommended or need to be incorporated, that's on a Friday afternoon, we'll have to scramble to compile all that into an amended ordinance or two that we then would have to get out to the public in order for them to read it and show up at the 22nd at that public hearing and be informed. I'm just a little afraid that's a tight window where there's really only one business day between the work session and that...
My thought would be that, as I think we've all talked about, none of us have really discussed what we all think about all this in terms of what the issues are, what bothers us, what doesn't. I don't even think it's practically, again, particularly productive on the 18th to sort of, to sort of wordsmith and say, so I don't, I wouldn't necessarily expect we would have a revised ordinance on the 22nd. I think the point of the 18th is, here's the things that we are concerned about. Are we generally in favor of this? Are we opposed to it at this point? What are the issues that we think need to be addressed? If that's all we accomplished in that session, then that would be the 18th to 22nd, we hear from the public. And now I think we are really fully informed to now actually sort of deal with where we go from here. So to me, that deals with the practical problem. I think we could accomplish a lot on the 18th because we haven't had that opportunity to discuss what we generally think, what we specifically think. I think it would be productive.
But, but I, my problem though would be if we have that discussion on that Friday, we all kind of come to, or a majority, I don't know, a majority of us thinks that a setback should be this or that, then we make some potential changes and then somebody comes to us on Monday and says, hey, we're, we're Tuesday, and says, well, I want my setback. And we're all sitting there thinking, well, yeah, it's actually going to be bigger over there. So I mean, I don't, and I, I don't think it's necessarily fruitful to have a meeting where people come up, because after now sitting through, and I know everybody else was there too, or many people were, I don't think it's necessarily fruitful to just have people come and just provide comments, because those are the same comments that will happen at the next meeting and the meeting after that. I just don't think, I think it's, I think I would much rather go to a meeting where there's this, at least a reading or a suggestion of a reading versus just telling people, just come and tell us what you think. And if we don't even have a concrete like suggestion in front of them or something written down, that makes me uncomfortable, so.
There's more impact of a statement too, when it's right before a board is taking something up. So I, so coming is much more powerful from their viewpoint, to come later. I don't know who would come, I don't know if it's necessary. We all have gone to and/or listened to the meetings. It takes a lot of time and it's...
Yeah.
Yeah. And it's hard on our residents to come time and time again, because they feel like they have to, you know? So that's, I mean, it's, you know, I think we should make it meaning, have them come when it's important and meaningful, you know, rather than just this, you know?
Yeah.
I think for me, the, the gap is that it isn't that we need to hear more from our residents, because I feel like I know it left and right. The thing that I think there's a gap on is I'm not sure our residents know exactly what we think. And so, and how we're embracing this. And just as an aside, when we're going to get into it perhaps with our roundtable, but when Becky and I had a coffee on Saturday, there were some revelations about just what we were thinking and what we were communicating in terms of our resident response. And so, and what I mean by that is just sort of the, the purpose of this and who initiated it. It wasn't even, some pretty basic things where there were some misperceptions. And so this is so atypical compared to most things we deal with. So I don't know that I have a solution, but I think Becky's trying to get to the point of having the public discussion of what we're thinking to see if there is a path forward on this or what the path forward looks like. I know there's a process for it. Whether there's agreement on how to move forward on it, I think is the struggle that we have, or at least I have.
So I, I think this is, I, I respect your, your thoughts and I understand what you're trying to accomplish, which is more feedback from the community, giving them more opportunities. But on the other hand, I really feel like we have to have some boundaries about that. They've given a lot of feedback over time and they had two shots at the Plan Commission with extended feedback, they're going to have two shots with us. And I'd rather that we had, so I don't know, I don't feel like we're gonna, and I could be wrong, but I don't think we're going to learn something really, really new if we have an open discussion on the 22nd. I really don't. So I think where we are is we've got, you know, varying, varying support of the overlay right now because we have varying understandings of what our limitations are without it or with it. And we need to get those cleared up. To me, that's the primary thing that we need to do on that Friday session. And then we can talk about some of the nuances of, and to me, they're nuances of, you know, there are people that came, have come over since, since we did the last iteration. there are people that came, have come over since, since we did the last iteration and have, you know, realistic suggestions about things they, they're worried about that we can't address that are specific. And once we have all that, we should know what, what we would like to do. And so, um, I think out of that Friday session, we can get our fog cleared and we can identify specifics that we want to change. And at the end of that, if we, I think we should be able to feel like we'll be able to come to some kind of a consensus one way or another on November 12th. And that will give us plenty of time to notice the public about November 12th and, um, to put out a revised version and even to have more one-on-ones or whatever it is we feel like we need to do in the meantime. And I, again, I appreciate what you're thinking, but I really think this is the best, least painful course to take. And so, and, and less confusing for everyone, for the public and, and us. Does anybody really have a big issue with that process?
I mean, other than what I've said before, which is if we, and again, i- i- it may have been your choice of words and you didn't mean it, but if, if we have a Friday session and we come to some sort of conclusion of where we're at and that's all public, how does that go over with residents who think we've already made a decision without having them talk? My only concern-
Vote, obviously. And I think what I said, and maybe there's, there's a very fine line difference, I'm sure, but we will feel at the end of that meeting that we can come to a consensus at our next meeting. That, that's kind of what I was saying, if we, if we have enough of an understanding of what, what's involved to make our decisions independently for the next meeting.
Well, I think we'll have to be very careful though with that language about coming to a consensus, because I just, you know-
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I think it'll-
Right, I just don't, I mean, because I agree with Jeff, we don't want the public to have the perception that we've made up our mind before our meeting. So I think it's also just asking our attorney questions, you know, asking just any sort of questions, burning questions, thinking about, oh, I'm thinking about the setback here, I'm thinking about this, like, you know what I mean? Or just perhaps asking questions of Anna, because, you know, Wash U won't tell us anything, but in your discussions with Wash U, why was the time set at 9:30? You know, that sort of thing. You know, rather than trying to come to a consensus-
Coming to a common understanding of the fact-
Yeah, like, yeah.
And our options-
Still going forward, you'll be able to get to your-
We are perhaps unlikely to have consensus on this issue and it's okay if we don't. We want to, what I would like to ensure is that we feel like we have a common understanding of the facts and our options and we're proceeding with that in mind.
I like it.
I like that phrase.
I like it too. Okay, so, do we know what we're doing then?
So, October 18th, there will be a work session. We'll do it at 3 o'clock, our regular time, and then we'll advertise the public hearing, the first one for November 12th. Is there, are there any strong feelings about the 26th?
I'm here.
People okay, are, are people okay with that? I just want to make sure nobody's leaving town for that or has some sort of conflict.
No, I mean, I'm here. I seem like the one that's always like throwing a wrench in it, but if that's the week of Thanksgiving, is that really the best week for us to have a, a vote on something?
We have to keep moving.
Okay. I, yeah, I mean, it, I, I'm just thinking through, right, the optics of it when we're basically approving something and either everybody's out for Thanksgiving or we're voting and then running out the door to go to Thanksgiving, whether that's gonna-
There's no good option at this point.
We would have already, I mean, in truth, all we've done is extended to a second meeting. We've already had the first meeting, which was really in these things where the real discussion is.
Okay, it, it's basically the second reading at that point, got it.
Then we'll, we'll plan on the 26th, because we get that question a lot, just the extended timeline. When can I expect some sort of decision on this? And so, it's, it's, there's potential it could be on the 26th.
Uh, yeah, I agree.
Okay, great.
Alright, um, okay, great, thanks everyone. And we can do a roundtable, um, we can start over here, yep.
Does anybody want to hear more about the Plan Commission?
What happened after 10 o'clock?
Yes, so, um, no, I don't have, uh, much to talk about. However, um, I did enjoy homecoming very much. It was a lot of fun to be on the fire truck again and, um, I was struck at homecoming, I think it's just great to see the community out. The football, the weather was beautiful, it was actually a little bit warm at the football game, but it's just, um, such a fun event and it just, um, you know, it's just wonderful to see our community come out, our school community come out, but then all the people who don't necessarily have kids in the school district or they've grown up or grown out of the school district and they're lining the streets. So, it's just, um, it's a great event and the weather was beautiful, so, um, it was very fun, albeit exhausting weekend, so.
Uh, I went to the Planning Commission meeting last night. Now, I don't, I don't really have anything at homecoming, although the other fun part was a lot of the, the guys who are on the team that won state in whatever year that was came back for their, yeah, in football.
Oh, yeah.
Were back for that, for this year. Becky?
Um, yeah, so, the High Point Neighborhood Association has an annual block party and that was this past weekend. Um, and they are always very kind and inviting us to attend. And so that was a, a great event, good opportunity to meet people and chat. We have like two hot topics in our ward, I would say. One related to traffic calming, which Rick has been closer to, so I'll let him talk about. And then, um, we did host a ward coffee on Saturday and had, you know, massive attendance. We usually have, you know, single digits to a dozen people and I think there were probably 30 or more. And it really was a great opportunity to talk to folks. I've shared with some of you that I think it was very constructive. There's a couple people who are just, um, adversarial and don't seem to be interested in getting into discussion and dialogue, but overwhelmingly folks did. And even what, what struck me that Rick alluded to was that even people who I've seen at most of the meetings and who have been attentive and have not been, who I would not describe as adversarial, were still coming to the understanding that, um, one, Wash U did not ask for the overlays. That was, and probably is still a misconception that persists. And understanding the motivation for something does drive how people think about it, right? So that, so once people knew that, they're like, oh, well, that, this, I might want to think about this differently. And the other was that, um, was that all of the things that we're describing in the overlay are allowed in the current existing zoning. And I want to acknowledge, David, that you and Anna have said these things. I, I'm not, uh, trying to suggest that you haven't. But I think that ability to like be in discussion, like, really helped, um, communicate it and have it be heard. And I think, um, Anna's, uh, presentation, um, at the Plan Commission last night was, um, really phenomenal in terms of kind of emphasizing those points and talking about that. So, really appreciate your work on that, Anna, um, and that's all.
Great, thanks.
Thank you all.
I just want to, I, I would follow that comment by saying that I thought the slideshow, uh, and, and Anna's presentation generally was really remarkable. I mean, just in terms of his thoroughness and the forcefulness of it. And, uh, I hope everyone on this board has an opportunity to actually review the slideshow and frankly, I hope hear from Anna. And by the way, of course, credit to David as well, because I know he's had a lot of these discussions with Washington U, but it wa- it was very impressive and, um, so I thought I would note that. I, um, the only thing else I would mention is I attended the, uh, the Legislative Committee of the Municipal League of Metro St. Louis last week, which again includes representatives from Ferguson, Frontenac, Orville, Crestwood, Northwoods, Clayton, Chesterfield, Webster Groves, Glendale, Normandy and Manchester. Mayor, uh, Mike Clement from Manchester is an excellent chairperson and, um, Pat Kelly, who's the executive director, does a great job. And I won't go into all the details, but a lot of it was, this is the time of the year where the league and others really sort of try to figure out what kind of bills they want to try to tee up for the session that begins in January. And obviously a common theme is that, uh, the state of Missouri and Jeff City does not do favors very often for the various municipalities. Much of their legislation seems to be, try to take power away from the municipalities. And one particular topic that's a high priority continues to be tax issues. Uh, once again, the grocery tax is going to come back. Uh, we all know about the, the property tax. St. Louis County has started that exemption program, which, um, is now available to everyone irrespective of the value of their property. So that obviously takes some more dollars away from us. Continued discussions about sales tax limitations. And the one thing that was disturbing oddly was that one of the reasons there wasn't a lot of bad stuff from our perspective enacted last year was because of the dysfunction in the Republican Party, particularly the, uh, the, the Tea Party folks or the Freedom Caucus, I guess is their better name. And a lot of those people, including Bill Eigel, who was kind of the biggest S disturber, uh, it was, um, he's basically gone now and so there's a great concern that it won't nearly be as dysfunctional as it was in the last session. And that's not good for us, because that means that a lot of these rather negative municipal things that are negative for us as municipalities may rise to the fore. So, it's an important effort, I think, that Municipal League is making through their lobbying efforts to try to oppose those things. And I'll try to, to the extent we continue to me, try to keep everybody informed of what's happening. So, that's it.
Um, I would just, um, just confirm Becky's comments regarding the High Point Demone picnic, as well as, um, the coffee and, and Bridgette and everyone's comments regarding the Plan Commission. I also, um, along with several of the rest of you, attended the M1 Bank, um, grand opening and they have their community room, which is a potential asset for us to consider in the future if they make that available to us or certainly for us to inquire. It's awfully close. The Jazz Fest was a great event as well. I hope that, um, we do consider rotating the stage 90 degrees in order to help the capacity crowds. We're getting such a big group there. And then finally, um, I feel like this is a daily event coming to City Hall. So, uh, there was a meeting on Friday for, um, our, uh, Demone, um, safety program. So, we've been studying that a number of ways and, um, we have circulated to residents a couple of plans Matt and his team had put together to address, um, uh, potential speed tables on Demone. Demone, just for your knowledge, it has 1,200 to 1,400 cars a day on average that, um, go up and down on. So, as a residential street, it's one of our most resi- busy residential streets that we actually control. So, we are looking and giving, uh, seeking resident feedback for an idea of either using speed tables in the north and southbound lanes or a raised crosswalk at, um, I believe it's Alamo and Demone. And so, um, what I took pleasure in is that one of, uh, the participants in that meeting, uh, one of the residents actually took the trouble of taking Matt's diagrams, putting them on a whiteboard and bringing them for presentation at the, um, High Point Demone picnic. Um, so they're taking this very seriously. It's something that they really see as an important asset for their community. And so, and we'll also be looking at, um, I, I, I got a lesson on the fact that if we want a new stop sign, we need to pass an ordinance. And so, um, we've asked David to work on that, so, well, that'll be coming before you. So, we are taking the, um, livable community plan seriously about pedestrian safety, traffic safety in our ward. So, that's it.
I don't really have anything. The parking rec, um, commission was canceled for this month and everybody else has kind of already said everything else I've been to. So, I will actually be quiet for once this meeting.
Okay, very good. I think everything I was going to mention's been mentioned, but, um, again, not here, but kudos to our team. The Jazz Fest was amazing. So, we just, uh, it's a, they hit it out of the park again, so I'm, I'm just excited about that. Uh, we did, David and I did meet with St. Louis County for, to hear about and to give input on their comprehensive planning process. Uh, they invited us and we gave them an earful about various things. I don't know if it helped them that much. They certainly, yeah, they're like, whoa! And so, um, but I thought it was great that we had the opportunity to at least begin that dialogue. And honestly, I didn't bring my notes from that meeting. Do you remember any key points that we discussed?
You know, a, a lot of it had to do with, um, of course, their area here within the city of Clayton, what they plan to do with their own facilities and campus, uh, and then a lot of discussion about connectivity. So, as we looked at the livable community plan, if you went to those meetings, uh, the things that everybody brought up, we're trying to get across Hanley, trying to get across Big Bend and making sure that as the county goes through this comprehensive planning effort, that they're keeping those, those networks in mind. Because, um, Clayton isn't the only city that they bisect with these major arterials that have no real safe or clear way across. So, all of us that are working on bike pedestrian plans, we're all running into the same issues. So, it's something they can help us address if, if they take care of it through their planning process and long-term with probably some capital dollars. But, uh, it's just a huge impediment for us and, uh, we, I think we made that known.
So, uh, yeah, we, we made it known that, you know, they should, um, incorporate some revenue generation plans. They should pass the use tax, um, you know, they're leaving money on the table, various things like that that we've already talked about. In fact, that reminds me too, that I did go to another meeting about that with the county. Lisa Fancie organized it at my request. And, you know, we talked about it and I think it's, it could possibly move forward. So, there's, there's some traction now, so. And also, I think you'll remember that, um, they brought to us the idea of a sign at Central and, um, Bonham, or Central and, is it Bonham, but, but the jail?
Opportunity Central.
Opportunity Central. Um, I, I did, um, check, check that out with Dr. Page's office and he is not, um, it's not important to him. I mean, necessarily, uh, so, he, I, I did tell that group, the group that I met, I met with, um, on the use tax, those guys were all from Dr. Page's office too. So, I just said, you know what, we really see some issues with doing that sign, so we, we would prefer not to do it. Sign is dead, so. Okay, so, uh, okay. That's all I have too. So, I think we can take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, okay. Enjoy the rest of your Tuesday.